Okay, just called order. And if you look at your agenda, this is coming out of recess from last Wednesday. So that's the special meeting that was held on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four. And the discussion item are the two agendas, capital and operational budget documents on the Council One Drive. Betty's here. Dan Jenkins is here. John, do you want to, Council MacLeary, do you want to open up? And are we starting with capital or are we starting with operational?
I thought we would start, make sure, close out on capital. And if, if, if that's fine with you Chair and the, and Council, then we have two, we have two guests that are here to speak to when we do the capital budget. There's, there's staff here from Bella Lion and also Kerry. Thought rather than haul them up, that if we could have them come before us and speak to, to the questions that came from the last, last budget meeting, if we go from there.
Yeah, that's Bella Lion, Kerry and East Link Center. Okay. So can we get the Chair of the East Link Center Board of Directors? I think Phillip's out there and John Abbott is General Manager. So John, you and Phillip can use that mic so when you are speaking, please press the button with the icon to speak. Counselor Duran is online, Counselor Twill online? Okay, but he may be coming in. And Counselor Duran, have you have a question? I think, is there a way that he can put up his hand on the, on the screen? Do you see that Counselor? I think Counselor Duran, you've used it before.
Yes, I have, thank you.
Yeah, she'll just tell us that you put up your hand. Okay, so if we go to the line thirteen in your capital budget. Dan, are we doing both, the operational and capital with East Link? Is that what you want to do?
Your worship, I believe the questions pertained primarily to the capital budget.
Okay, so just click on your East Link and there's your icon. Do you have a, should be up there on the screen there, John and Phillip. So there were some questions about it there. Phillip and John, do you want to go through the line by line? And any questions we'll ask.
Do you want us to go through line by line or do you just want the ones of the questions?
Um, I think you only have five, five lines. So the pylon sign is pretty simple, right? That's the new signage?
That's the new sign on the, on the roadway, the V sign that we showed Council on November twenty fifth, maybe it was, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and the pylon sign would be similar to what you have out at Atlantic Superstore? It's a three sided structure?
It's a V, it's a V shape.
V, there you are.
It's a V shape, so it's probably twelve, fourteen feet high.
Right.
With two video screens inserted that would put off our message to whatever that might be, whether it be an advertiser or be an event or whatever it might be.
Yeah.
And we would control that from inside, tie it into the clock. We could be running the same thing on the clock and the fascia sign on the building that's going up any day now.
Okay, what were the other issues? Heat pipe connectors?
Was there anything else with that?
Oh, on the flooring, basketball flooring resurface, resurfacing.
That was, that was requested in the twenty-two, twenty-three capital budget. And it was held over because we haven't been able to, to do it as yet with, with COVID, coming out of COVID, with the upheaval with the East Coast Basketball League. It still has to be done. There's a, there's a storm logo on the, on the floor now that I think is probably four years, five years past its due date. The floor itself is, is not in great shape. It was done in twenty twelve, I believe, or twenty fourteen. It was just re, repolied. This is actually sanding it down to, back to the basic floor and then building it back up again. We have permission, we worked with Basketball PEI to have their logo at center, center court. So it's very generic for anything that comes in. The Globetrotters are in on May first. We're in deep negotiation now for a, an international event coming this fall that, that's going to require that. And I don't want to say too much more because it is in negotiation. The other thing I guess is if, if we're, I, I heard a comment that we don't have a basketball team and that's, that's a valid comment, we don't. Not to say we won't have one in the future. And it's a two hundred thousand dollar investment twelve or fourteen years ago that if we don't look after it, we're gonna, it's just going to deteriorate. Other floors have gone through the same thing and they've deteriorated to the point they're trying to borrow ours, so. What else is there? The heat pipe connectors? Is that, or is that, sorry, any more questions on the, on the floor?
Counselor McTard.
Thank you, John. I think that's context we're missing with the basketball floor resurfacing. Clearly just thinking there's no basketball team, but what we did not know now in hindsight, thinking about the Globetrotters coming, so they'll be utilizing that. And then, and, and then you said potentially another event that may be here. So does the resurfacing, is it more with the actual court itself and its ability to serve its purpose more so than logoing? I just want to make sure there's a distinction between those two.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. Yeah, very much so. It's not, it's not just logo, logo. It's, it's the condition of the floor, just the wear and tear on it with having professional players play. It's chipped and it breaks off little pieces of wood and there's numerous things. If you get down and look at it, it's in pretty rough shape, to be quite honest. So it's, it's something that we needed to do regardless of, if, if we want to use the basketball floor. And the process, just one note, the Globetrotters won't be, won't be using it. We can't get on, it's got to be laid out for six weeks. So once the ice comes out and the Globetrotters are in, the ice, the ice may actually still be in at that time. And then we have a circus on the tenth of May and then following Monday, I think it's the thirteenth, we lay it out and we leave it there for six weeks. So that, that's the way it cures properly. We can restack it again. They recommend at least six weeks, so. So Globetrotters won't be using it, but any event from the June on will be, will be using it.
Okay, that's a given. Good, let her go.
Okay.
Good, fine with that. And what's the?
I see a note by the heat pipe connectors. That's what we've been in with Council on a, on a couple of occasions. We have to run the heat in the building year round because if it, when it cools down, our connectors from our pipes that go through, that run our water expand and the water comes out through the, through the ceilings and through the dressing rooms and everywhere else. So that's something that has been identified in the past. Fiona really brought it to light with the, the power outage we had at that time. It just, it was, it was a complete mess. We lost our ice, we lost water, we, we spent a ton of money trying to fix that back. They've identified that that's the issue. We can do it in two parts. This, this would be part A. It'd go from the source, I guess, through to the Trade Center and then stop there so we can shut it off. Trade Center is not such a big deal because it's all concrete over there, but we have dressing room ceilings and stuff that just get destroyed, Giprock ceilings, so that's, that's what that is. You know, I think we made clear to Council when we're here in November that, that, you know, we, we've got a bigger picture in our mind. And, you know, hopefully we can come in and present that to Council at some point in the near future. So these, some of these things certainly could be deferred if, if there's a bigger picture in, in the, in the offing. And we would be all for that. So, you know, as far as the door replacements, the pylon sign and the heat repair connectors, if, if there was a conversation could be had, then, then certainly we wouldn't be opposed to, to deferring those items. I think the basketball floor is a necessity. I think it's important for us as a facility to have proper, proper equipment for, for when we go out to try to attract events. It's pretty hard when you don't have something that you can offer them, so that's a little difficult. And the storage cubbies, they should have been put in Canada Games. Unfortunately, they weren't on the budget, so those, those things, they're not huge. I know the others are, are big, a lot bigger, but certainly we wouldn't be opposed to a deferral if, if another conversation could be had at some point.
Counselor Ramsey.
Thanks for that, John. Just getting back to the heat pipe. Is this a one shot deal? Like, like how long would this last? Basically, if this is approved, this repaired? Like ten years, five years?
Oh, no, it'd be the life of the building.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it, it was, it was a fault from the get go and it never really raised its ugly head until we started losing power. And, and again, if we keep the heat on year round, it's not an issue. But the minute we can't keep the heat on due to whatever, a power failure or whatever, then, then we got a problem if it's anything extended, but this, this'll end, this'll end it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Beck.
And of course, the alternative conversation we're referring to is a potential renovation of East Link Center, which, you know, we have to find out and, you know, I think we've had the discussions either formally or informally. And we do know that there's, or maybe everyone may not know, but there is a study being done that I think you guys are going to come back to us with an idea of what a potential renovation may look like. I guess my question is, if this would be part of, this would be part of, this, we, we need this whether there's a renovation done or not anyway, right? And it would have to be, it, it would, if, if there, if the rink just stays as it is and there are no changes, we still need the. The other, the other part is, is if it's done as a part of another project, then that's maybe a little easier to do, I guess is probably what you're, what you're trying to say here. Am I correct?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor. Yes. You know, we don't want to do things twice. So the, the heating pipe part, the, the pipe connectors, if we could, yeah, it, it would be part of a bigger picture. And we don't want to go ahead and do it if, if the bigger picture comes to fruition. We're going to be perhaps altering what we've done or trying to route it a different way. If, if there's no bigger picture, which I think would be a sad time for, for the city of Charlestown, then, then we need this done or else we're going to run heating bills for twelve months of the year for the net, for the duration of the building and risk at any time losing power for any extended period of time. We're back into that flood zone again with forty or fifty buckets around the, around the arena catching water. So, yeah.
Yeah, so the suggestion is, why don't we just park it? Yeah, park it. And, you know, if, when John and Phil comes back with some of the board members, that we would have a bigger discussion. And if that doesn't go anywhere, then we have to look at putting it back in. John, just quickly, you, you get your heat from district heat, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other, okay, Counselor MacLeary.
Yeah, no, certainly support your recommendation on that, Mayor Brown. And just, but just with the understanding that, that I think it's incumbent upon Council and, and the appropriate committee, be it economic development, tourism, that, that we make our best efforts to, you know, support, support you and your management team, you know, on this, on this rental piece and, and, you know, what's this thing going to look, potentially look like? And I think, I think we have to partner with you in that and certainly personally do my best to see that, you know, the efforts made in our end to, to be part of that process and we keep the wheels moving on that immediately, if that's.
Yep. Yeah, well, thank you, Counselor. Yeah, we, we certainly believe in this is the proper thing to do. And I have no problem parking. I, I really don't want to park the basketball floor. I think it's a necessity. But the, the two, the pipe, the heat pipe, and the, actually the first three, it would not upset us if the conversation could be further ahead to park those items.
Yeah. Yeah. Counselor Bernard.
Thank you. John, when is the study that we just heard about tonight, when's that supposed to be completed?
It's, it's ongoing, they're in the budget side of it now. We've, we've gone through the, you know, the engineering parts of it and can it be done? Yes, it can be done. Can it be brought up to today's standards? Yes, it can do that as well. It may end up being cheaper than we think, I, I don't know. I was assured, or I was hoping that we could have had some figures for you by now, but you know, the board is kind of taking this on itself, which kind of goes, goes to the, to how we feel about, about this. We, we're paying for this first part of the study. If it comes back with a figure that's acceptable to, to Council, then we would be back again looking for some RFP funding to get this out and get some bids in and, you know, instead of talking about it for another twenty years, we, we do something, either, either yea or nay, and we get on with life.
So is, is this similar to the study that was done around two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven?
It was two thousand and four, actually, Terry. This, this one came from two thousand and four. It was a Bergmarck study and, and.
The top, the top loading study?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we've just asked Coles to bring it into two thousand and twenty-four with pricing model now. And so we're at that. I hope to have it by the end of this week, early next week for, for the, for the dollar figure. And then there would be a presentation to.
And just out of curiosity, John, I'm wondering, I thought during Canada Games, there was a, a deal come up on, on some flooring that we, some hardwood flooring that we would have purchased. Do you have that out, is that out in East Link?
Yeah, not, it's not hardwood.
What is it?
But it's a, it's a hard surface flooring, but it's not hardwood.
Are you using it for anything?
We're actually, the first person that's going to use it is the, and I should, I guess I can say, is the French school for, for some kind of an affair there. It's going to be our first.
So it's not, it's not a, it's not a basketball.
No, 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 no. It's just, it's just a subfloor that we could play tennis on or badminton or something, so.
Yeah. Yeah, you're taking that out to the Le Col Francois Bierd for Salon de L'ivoire. Oui, Monsieur? Monsieur Beck?
So, so just so I'm clear here, when I, when I think park, I think we're taking it off totally, but we're having kind of a, a potential comeback discussion once that study's done to get an idea of what the pricing is. John and Phil are going to come back, talk to us and say, here's what, twenty, twenty-four dollars, this project from two thousand and oh four. And it's basically the same project area, but to say what it looks like and then we just, we'll say, yeah, let's go to the next stage or, or not. So when I see this parking, going back to my original point, if we, let's say it doesn't proceed, we still need this work done. So I, I don't know how we tentatively leave something in a budget or do we?
No, you just take it out right now. And then if we have to put it back in, we'll have a meeting in.
Okay.
June and say, okay, the heating pipes have to go in because we don't want to do a renovation to the building.
Okie doke, so we can put it back in later.
And that two thousand and four study now, just remember, it, we did do work. The seats went right down to the glass. We installed the corporate, corporate boxes. There was about six million dollars of work done back in two thousand and four. It was the other amount that we didn't go with the architect from Vancouver.
But that was just to meet the Q League standards, so.
Correct.
So this is, this is a little different.
This is, this is different, much, this is a major renovation.
Right.
Yep, good, good to park it?
I'm good.
Okay, just.
Your worship, just for clarification, the cubbies, can we park those as well or is that something that should?
I think, I think they should be done. They're not, they're not in rooms that are going to be affected.
Right, just, thank you.
Yeah. And just, I guess one small thing, the seats went down in, in certain areas, so the, the building went to the, went to the boards. This, this would be a total right to the bottom, would put us in a, in a capacity position where we could bid on events that we can't even bid now, such as the Briar and Memorial Cup, Prospects Games, things, things like that that we can't even, we can't even dream about. We've got everything else. We've got all the hotel rooms and all the restaurants and all the amenities that we need in the city. We just don't have enough seats to, to bring anybody in, so. So there's that, you know, talk about a revenue generator, you know, talk to people about what the Memorial Cup brings in and it astounds you, you know, so. So those things are open to us, so.
Yeah, so CIAU basketball championships too?
Yep.
Okay.
With a new floor.
And a new floor.
And a new floor. But, John, I know in 2022, 2023, you did have it in your budget, $60,000. But did you resurface it then?
We just couldn't get a timeframe with Canada Games, and then the U-Cup, and then, we just didn't get a time to break, that we could put it down, to do it right. So...
Counselor Dron, any comments, questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is that all right? Can we move to the next step? Thank you, John. Thank you, Philip. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. So, is Dan, is Alan here yet? So, Alan Wood would be the rep from Cary Belaliant. I don't think the Chair is going to be here tonight. Okay. So, can we just go on and then come back to that? So, to the capital? Dan, or Betty, or John, we're, like, I think, we just got, what do we have to tidy up here?
One thing I wanted to bring forward was to get another $1 million into new sidewalks. And I wondered if the fleet, fleet management could be looked at as a source of moving some of that over, to taking the sidewalk budget from 2 to 3 million.
Well, I think you just covered about a million-plus from East Link, right? That's what we dropped.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I guess where it comes from, if we can get another million in sidewalk, new sidewalk construction from 2 to 3, and if it's this from the East Link, or can her fleet be looked at? Scott Adams, maybe, can speak to that. Mr. Adams?
Your worship, through to the Chair of Finance. So, we have a number of already commitment, vehicle commitments that we have ordered in this past year that we still haven't seen yet. And there was a few resolutions, just a couple of meetings ago as well that were passed. So, a lot of those funds will be used to purchase those vehicles that were already on order, and we're just waiting for them to show up sometime in the next 12 months. So, we wouldn't be able to cut very little, if any, into that budget, because we have so many commitments out there already for vehicles.
Okay. Counselor Bernard, Counselor Beck, Counselor McLeer.
I think he just wanted to respond to that.
Sure. We can get him going, Johnny. Counselor McLeer, sorry.
Well, yeah, and if it's not a million, could it be 5?
Your worship, through the Chair, I don't believe so. No, like I say, we have one vehicle, that's about a $400,000 purchase for Arbus. So, that alone will take up a good chunk of that budget, along with a few other vehicles, again, that are already on order. And we'll start to see them trickle in sometime later this summer.
Counselor Beck? No, sorry, Counselor Bernard, Counselor Beck, and then Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, your worship. Question to Betty. Betty, the other day when I asked what was left in the CCFB fund, and there was 1.1 million. I'm assuming, Betty, that that's what we have in account now. So, we would be expecting another 3.6 to come in this year. So, I assume that didn't come yet? Am I correct in assuming that? I think it comes in two payments a year?
We have not received anything for the 24, 25 year yet. Is that what you're asking about?
That's what I'm asking. So, we should be used, we can use some of that towards our capital.
But the 1.2 million dollars includes an estimate for the 24, 25 year. We don't, we haven't received it yet, but we've put in an amount that we're expecting.
So, the 1.1 million that we have now is not here yet? It's not left over from our other allocations that we've had?
No. We have budgeted to use some in the 24, 25 budget, and the unbudgeted amount for 2024, 25 is the 1. almost 2 million.
It's on your screen.
1.187.
Okay. And is that what we already put into road asphalt, then?
Yeah, we did.
So, for 2024, 25, the CCFB fund is accounted for?
Yep.
Correct? There's nothing... Because we always used to carry a surplus of the gas tax funding.
So, if you look at line 18, column H, 3.6, estimated 24, 25, so it's already in there. Correct, Betty?
She's checking that.
No, I wasn't fully aware that we had actually allocated the additional 1.2, but that's what it says there. See, at the upper part, there's various projects. But we have allocated the rest. Okay, so it's all allocated then?
Yeah, because we applied the 1.2 or 1.1 to additional road surf. So, it went from 2.75 to 3.75 plus. So, if you look at street resurfacing there, Betty, it still is 2.75 in column D. So, you changing that to add 1.2? Your worship, I believe the CCBF is fully allocated to cover all of the budgeted expenditures of 2.750. I'll just have to go back and check the earlier version to see if there's, that included the additional 1.187. So, I'll just double-check that.
Okay.
No, well, no, last week when we looked at it, was it 2.75? And the 1.1, the 1.2, what Counselor Bernard said, is left over, apply that to street resurfacing. So, it was already there.
It wasn't put in, it wasn't plugged in here.
It wasn't plugged in. It's great with Excel. Okay, Counselor Bernard, did you want to finish up there, or do you want to add something else?
No, I'm good, sir.
Okay, Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I just want to go back to our East Link for a minute. Although we removed a million dollars, really, there's a, they're going to come back with a quote on what that project looks like. And if it is something that we cannot move on, we're going to have to move on this repairs here. And so, I really, although it's not listed in there, I think that million dollars really should be almost, I don't think we can safely say that we've totally removed that money, because there's a pretty good possibility that when, at some point in time, we may be coming back here looking for that 980,000 dollars.
And we come back.
I know. But what I'm saying is, you looked at, the way the discussion was earlier, we said, oh, well, we saved a million dollars by not doing East Link. Really, there's a strong possibility that that million dollars could be something that we will have to look at later on. So, I don't want to think that it's totally gone and off the books for this year, because there's a very high probability, you know, that we could be coming back. John and Phil could be coming back saying, we need that heat pipe re-connectors addressed. So, I don't want us to think that, okay, we've got an extra million dollars to throw around into something else, because I think there's a real, a very strong possibility that we could be looking at a million dollars coming back in an emergency spend.
Go ahead, Counselor Bernard. Go ahead.
To me, I'd look at it the same, Norman. If we do go ahead with, the report comes through, and we do go ahead with it, we have to come back to council and approve that funding. So, if you go ahead with the study, of what the results are from the study, and we decide to do the upgrade, then you'll have to come back to council to get that money. So, there's no difference.
Yeah. Anyways, just once, I just, I need to get some others. Counselor McKinnon, then Counselor McTard. Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. First, I would like to agree with Counselor McLeer. If we can find some more money there for sidewalks or trails in that, but the budget would be great. But just from my own clarification, I'm not understanding, if we, if council approved resolutions for vehicles a couple of months ago, would that not be the 23, 24 budget? So, why now, depending on the 24, 25 budget money for vehicles that we approved a couple of months ago? Somebody please explain that to me.
Okay. Mr. Chief Engineer, Scott Adams.
Your worship, through to the Counselor. So, we obviously did put a request in for new vehicles this year, and we hope to purchase some more new vehicles. But we do have to account for budgets for vehicles that we have made a commitment to, to a dealer, putting an order already in, has been approved by council. But because we haven't spent the money by March 31st, we have to put that budget into the new capital budget. So, that million and some odd change that you see there is for those expenditures that we've committed to, but we haven't received the vehicle, or spent any money on that vehicle that has been ordered.
Follow-up, Counselor McKinnon?
Yeah. So, would that not be 23, 24 money carried over? Because you're asking for a million-plus in the new budget. So, where was last year's money?
Your worship, through to the Counselor. So, again, we had to look at what was realistic. And so, we knew we had these commitments. Yes, there will be new vehicles that will go out for purchase this year, probably sometime in the summer, fall. But that money won't show up in the budget until next year, because it's usually an 8 to 12-month window to get half these vehicles anyway. So, that's, so the money that's in there right now is to account for those vehicles that are, that have been committed for, and that we're purchasing, and that we'll receive sometime this year.
Counselor McTard.
Thank you, your worship. Dan, can you just verify, I guess, kind of what number we're aiming to here? We're looking at 54 million right now. What's your magic number in the sense of, we're taking a million away here, we want to add a million there? Like, do we want to stay within that range, just so that when we're doing this jockeying back and forth of, you know, money from here and saving there, are we staying within the range of your 54, 55? Is that what you're aiming for right now, to help with the balancing of the budget through the operational side?
Yes, through your worship, to Counselor McTard. Through your worship, to Counselor McTard. So, we're very close to having a balanced operating budget, if we're using up the current year's forecast surplus. We're around 300,000 in the difference, which on a $50 million capital budget, and an $80 million operating budget is a rounding error, for lack of a better term. So, if we were to add a million dollars, or take away a million dollars from the capital budget, give or take, it's $100,000 in interest and depreciation that you'd either save, or you'd put additional burden on. So, I think it's safe to say that we're within shooting distance where we are. I'd be comfortable saying, you know, if we shaved a million here, we could probably afford to put a million back somewhere else.
Follow-up, Counselor McTard. Good?
Oh, it's a clarification I think we need, because we're, like, if it goes to Counselor Beck, we just took a million away. We're saying, okay, well, let's put a million right now on sidewalks. Just want to know if that's just even trade. But then, of course, we're going to say, put 500,000 somewhere else, and we're not making the difference up anywhere. So, it'll creep up, or creep down, whatever. Just wanted to get verification that we are aiming for, you know, the number here is on the summary sheet. It's around 54 or 5 there now. But it could have been 55 here a minute ago, because you just took about a million out of there. But we haven't put it somewhere else yet. We're debating whether or not we're going to put it somewhere else.
Counselor Beck?
I think Danny wanted to say something.
You want him to go first?
Sure. Yeah, it looked like he wanted to say something.
Is your question about holding, like, keeping it in the budget? Is that what you want to do?
Well, I just wanted to go back to what Counselor Bernard said, that, you know, they're going to have to come back with, like, but the ask is going to be bigger. If they come back with a bigger ask, they're going back into multimillion-dollar ask. It's not 950,000.
So, that's why you remove it now, and they come back with a bigger ask? We'll be ready for the bigger ask? We'll take care of the heat pipes and everything else? Could be. That's right. Yeah, that's...
I know. And I guess that's just where, you know, I just keep, let's keep everything in mind, I guess, is kind of what I'm saying. And the ask that is potentially coming back is...
Higher.
Significant.
Yep. Dan, did you want to say something about that?
Thank you, your worship. It was just along the same lines as Counselor Beck's point, that's all.
Counselor McLeer. John, Counselor McLeer?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Yeah, again, just coming back to this, I want to lobby and push for another million dollars to the new sidewalk construction. I know there's, I've been lobbied hard on Orchard Hill Park, Scott Street. There's, it's a safety issue with that. It was on, even if we put this million dollars, Scott Street won't get done this year. So, I'm hoping if this can happen, that maybe, you know, maybe it gets done next year. It was on the list to be done this year. And I just, you know, it's a priority. I'd like for it, I'd like to see it, and if that, those funds can be moved from, you know, from East Link into that project, I hear what Counselor Beck is saying, you know, Phil and John, you know, are in speak, and they're coming with a bigger project, maybe that gets looked at again, and gets dumped into 25, 26 capital projects, potentially.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Bernard. Oh, Counselor Bernard now.
So, a couple of things. Once we get it operational, I mean, we just heard that, you know, it's $100,000 in operation to fund a million dollars. So, I mean, once we get into the operational part, we'll see where we are, how healthy we are. There may be another million to put into that. I mean, one thing I noticed that did this year that we've never done before, there's a little over $2 million in new initiatives, which what we always look at is the budget, the capital budget, the operational, have them looked after. Then, if there's any money left over, we look at new initiatives and see, because those are extra asks from their budget, their wish list. So, we go through that and say, yes, we agree with this, and no, we don't agree with that. So, really, my way I look at it is, right now, we're sitting in the black of 1.7 million, without going through all the other department budgets to see if we agree with them. So, you know, when we come through the evening here, we may have extra funding that you could put that million dollars into the sidewalk, for 100,000 of your operational. I mean, but the other thing I just want to ask is Scott Adams. Scott, I thought...
Mr. Adams, Chief Engineer, can you come to the mic, please? Thank you.
Scott, I thought when we passed the resolutions to buy those vehicles, and I remember there was a couple of electric trucks in those, but I thought the resolution read that the funding would come out of the 23, 24 budget.
Your worship, to the Counselor. So, that was the goal, for sure. But as I've been told by our leadership team, that even if we want to come out of last year's budget, if it's, if we don't own the product yet, we can't pay for it until we get it. So, that's the challenge. It's just delivery timelines, and when those vehicles are going to show up.
So, I wonder why there's times that there's things that are carried over in our capital budget, and there's times that things aren't carried over. And I mean, if somebody can answer that for me, I'd love it, because that's what we seem to be doing. Some things there's a carryover, some things there isn't.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, your worship, through you to Counselor Bernard. So, the difference this year is that we're really trying to focus on the approval of the projects. this year is that we're really trying to focus on the approval of the projects. So council approved the purchase of, of the vehicles. It's, it's an accounting fact that you can't record a capital purchase or, or an operating expense in a year before you, you receive it or you, or you consume the, the service. So it's, it's really, it's, it's just a matter of when you buy. And that's where we're trying to move away from carryovers for amounts and talk about what's our spending plan. So in the next 12 months, what do we plan to spend realistically on our capital projects? So we have a wish list. You know, we started at 90 million. Last year was 65. But we know now that those were not realistic to think that we could achieve them in that, in that next fiscal year. So we don't want to unreasonably tie up the operating budget, thinking that we're going to spend all that money and have to, have to finance it and depreciate those assets in the end, at the end of the year when we know that that's not a, not a reasonable probability that's going to happen. So the, the accounting, in terms of when Scott's vehicles end up in the financial statements, if we don't take delivery until April or May or June, we can't possibly record them on the financial statements unless they're delivered. So they really are, as an accounting fact, acquisitions or tangible capital asset purchases for this next coming fiscal year. Even though we have approved the project, which is, which is separate from when we plan to spend it, when we plan to acquire it, like we, like we approved the Simmons project, but we actually only built the project over three years. So you, you add that value to the project each of those three years. You don't, you don't plan to borrow 36 million in year one because you know it's going to take you three, three years to build out, and, and you're only going to need to finance it over three years. So we're looking at approving projects and then looking at when we plan to acquire them and put them into service. And that's, that's what we're, that's what our, our budget focus. We're trying to move away from the, the carryovers because they tend to get inflated and you, and you tend not to look hard at, at, you know, the, what's behind that carryover number. And it does give management a bit of a false sense of security that they have latitude to spend money when perhaps they don't really because they, they can't, they can't accomplish those projects in, in time. We looked, you know, we, we budgeted last year for 65 million, but we only spent, you know, somewhere, somewhere around 30. So we're just trying to reflect the reality of, of when we buy, buyer assets and consumer services that hit our financial savings.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. And I like everybody else. I want everything on the list, too. And I'm looking at our sidewalk list. And, you know, any new ask comes with operational costs as well, right? So I guess I'm just wondering, Scott, has that been kind of taken into account as we add more infrastructure, more sidewalks, the operational side to maintain and keep those sidewalks up to par? Has that been incorporated, too, as we keep adding more capital? I just want to make sure that they're going to balance and it's realistic.
Chief Engineer?
Your worship through to Counselor McCabe. So yes, that's always in the back of my mind. My, my team, they remind us all of that all the time. And Joey and I and Superintendent sit down and talk about those things. So sidewalks is one of those ones we're getting to a pressure point where as we continue to add more, we will need to likely add additional routes for sidewalk clearing, and that will require additional machinery. So probably next year, we might be looking at that. So those are some of the calculations that we're going to be looking at over the next 12 months and bringing that forward to committee and council for you.
So realistically, just a quick follow up. Sorry. Realistically, as we add money into, in more money, which I agree, I'd like to be able to maintain, we just approved this sidewalk plan. You feel we have enough means operationally to maintain those sidewalks this year with extra money to do a few extra projects?
Your worship through to, through to Counselor McCabe. So yes, I think we'll be fine this year coming up. Again, it's been, we're getting to a point where we do have to look at another route or another two routes. But we, we believe that it can be done with our equipment. And then, like I say, we'll be looking at that over the next year on, on how to augment those sidewalk clearing services.
I'll get right back. Counselor, Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, your worship. Thanks for that, Scott. Scott, all the seven sidewalks that you have down for this year, is it realistic to think that they'll all be done? For the seven streets, I should say. I'm sorry.
Your worship through to the counselor. From a design perspective, yes, we think we, we already have one fully designed, and the remaining six are currently being designed by a consultant who has given us a tentative date of April 15th, I believe, is when we'll get the documents. So by the end of April, we expect to tender that work if whatever's approved for, for budget. So yes, be, by us getting out nice and early, we expect that we can achieve that. Now, we might look at it, and those, these are discussions we'll have with our consultant. We may break them up to see if we want to get, if we can get two contractors to work at it, just to guarantee the work is done this year. So there's a couple of things that we'll look at over the next few weeks. But as of right now, we don't see any reason why that work couldn't get done this year.
Counselor Matard.
Thank you, your worship. This question might be to our C A O. Just in line with the budget and the resolutions. So I, if I recall, I believe we are passing resolutions for budgeted items in the 24, 25 capital, which we haven't officially agreed upon yet. And so I think what Dan said is that we could do that from a project perspective theoretically. I think there was a couple that I recall. And should we be doing that, I guess would be the
Thanks, your worship, through to Counselor Matard. There were a couple that, there were operational items. There were two events that we had to put money down for that were included into operational. And I'm trying to recall if there were any capital. Do you recall which ones those were?
Chief Engineer, any capital?
Seaview Boulevard was definitely one. I had to check what else.
I feel like there was a couple that was either capital or operational that we approved. And I guess I'm all right with that. If that's practice that we can do, it's basically securing the project. But we haven't, we haven't officially adopted. So we're sitting here talking about taking and adding away what's kind of already made some commitments from a resolution perspective.
Through to Counselor Matard. Yet, there are some that you did pass resolutions for. I don't think any of them on here have come onto the chopping block, though, in your discussions to not. The preference would be that, no, you're not passing resolutions ahead of budget in terms of things for the next budget year. The economic development ones were kind of exceptions to, to the norm, just because we, there was a need to get the payment down in order to sign the contracts. And I believe a couple of the others that were coming forward, there were some contract issues that were pushing it up in terms of priority in Public Works.
But I'm also wondering if some of these were vehicles that we did. Were these some vehicles that we, we passed resolutions and hence why we can't get rid of this budget?
I think the Chief Engineer already, can you just repeat that answer?
Yes, your worship, through the, through the Counselor Matard. So we, again, those budgets, there was a number of vehicles that were set in the past budget for purchase. We did go out to tender and pass a resolution to purchase those vehicles. But again, just because of delivery timelines, we have to account for those purchases next year because we don't have the, because the, the actual, when we take physical ownership of the vehicles, when we're, when we pay that invoice.
So I'm getting that part. That's part I get. I guess if we were, if we were budgeting that in 23, 24, and it didn't come based on delivery, carry that over. I guess if we're, if last week we budgeted 10 new vehicles for the 24, 25 capital budget, and we're sitting here trying to debate that, that's where I find it a little bit tricky to be doing that in advance of the budget being approved. So I think there was a couple smaller cases, but I just wanted, I thought I heard Dan say we could do that in a sense because it was the project that we were trying to get approved at council, but the spending wouldn't come till 24, 25 or later. However, it would have to be approved spending, too.
Yeah, so certainly, through your worship, to Counselor Matard. I, I think, as the C A O identified, we certainly want to approve expenditures in, in the year, not, not, not ahead of time. But there are exceptional circumstances if we believe that there's a business case for doing, for doing that in order to, to, to get a, get an event. But certainly, in, in Scott's case, we, because we don't own the asset, we can't, we can't record it as a
Yeah. Yeah. And, and you know what? When we changed over, and Counselor Bernard, you remember this, when we changed over to the fiscal year started on April 1st, our fiscal year previously was December 31st, and we didn't get the budget out until March. So that first quarter was just going on estimates. So first quarter was already accounted for. This is a lot better, and I think we're getting much better at doing it. Okay, Dan?
Just the other point is, is that, you know, when we finish our year in, March 31st, in a, in a week's time, that reflects our actual purchases and the interest costs and the depreciation associated with that. So in effect, it's been carried over because we aren't burdened with that, the carrying cost and the, and the depreciation from the asset.
Okay. Mr. Alan Wood is in the hall. From Cary, Bella Lion. Alan, you're with your assistant? She's with you? You're with her? Okay. Just introduce yourselves, Alan. Can we, again, just bring up the budget by going to Bella Lion, and it'll give you the budget? Okay. There it is. Good. You got it there? So, Alan.
Your worship, Alan was kind enough to send along some graphics. So if he'd like to speak to the capital budget, and I can hopefully flip back and forth through the graphics that he has to support the expenditures, I will do my best to do so.
So maybe we can fast track this. So what we've yellowed out is what we questioned, correct? Right? Yeah, okay. Let's, let's just deal with them first, okay? Alan, sidewalk replacement arena parking lot, that gets in every budget. I know it was in 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25. You must, you guys must be making that sidewalk go around the whole perimeter. So are you dropping it? It should be up there on the screen.
Thank you, your worship. So you are correct. The first year that it was on there, we were not able to, we, we sent the tender out. The tender was not able to be filled. We had zero responses on the tender. We had a conversation in the council chambers here. And I, and in this last meeting, even Counselor McCabe brought it up, asking about contacting Public Works about joining up. And we did do that. We contacted and reached out to somebody within the Public Works Department four different occasions, and we did not get a response. So we were able to find someone to do the work. So we have completed all the sidewalks surrounding the building. The only sidewalk that is remaining is the sidewalk that is coming out of the arena parking lot, as you can see from the diagram up above. So there is the, the piece that comes up out of the parking lot to the crosswalk, then you cross over into the McLaughlin Arena area. So this area is in, in bad shape, coming up that area. We, all of our arena users plus our seniors active living, we have approximately 30 designated spots in that parking lot that they're using. So if anyone comes up that area, my, my main concern is a trip and fall and someone getting hurt in that spot. So we just want to make sure that that is taken care of. So all the rest are completed at this time.
Okay. Counselor Ramsey?
Thanks for that, Alan. So that's the little ramp come from the parking lot up, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So you're saying that's going to cost $90,000?
So the, the ramp comes up, and then there's a stretch of sidewalk that goes down in front of that as well. So we have gotten a second quote on the ramp and a portion because some of the other concrete pieces in between there are in bad shape as well. And that came back at about half of that amount. So it was about $45,000 just to complete that, the ramp and a few other pieces to the left.
Counselor Bernard?
I was there this morning. Actually, I go over here quite a bit. And I guess I'd have to take a closer look. I didn't see anything wrong with that section that needed to be done right away. But anyway. So you, you're just talking about the part that ramps down to the parking lot?
That is correct.
Okay.
Counselor McCabe?
I'm sorry, no one got back to you. We need to do better when we say people reach out. We're going to get better rates. Sidewalk replacement, so it's 90,000 you're looking for from the city. Are we responsible to pay for that full?
So it's 87, it's 87.13.
Eighty-seven percent, yeah.
So the university would be 13% of that. Is that, is that our 87% of that 90,000, Alan?
No, that is the, the full value of it. And then what comes off is what we receive from our tenant fund and then what we'd receive from U P E I.
Which is 13%.
13%.
And what do you receive? How much, how many, what's the percentage from the tenant fund? It's 166,000, right?
It's approximately, this year, we're budgeting at about 115,000 that we'll be receiving from the tenant fund.
115 or 150?
115.
Okay.
So can, is, so that, can you tell me what would be in here for our capital? Is it still 90,000?
So just take 13% of that 90?
Yeah, I failed math.
It's about 13,000.
What?
It's about 10,000. Take off 10,000.
Just 10,000. And then, so it's 80,000 he's looking for, they're looking for.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor.
I'm
Did you want to finish up?
No.
You want me to come back?
Did I hear, did I hear you say you had it repriced at 45,000?
We went back out to get it repriced for just that main section. And so it is 45,000 for that main section.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's not including the rest of the sidewalk. So that would have to be repaired at some point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor McCabe?
That's kind of my point. So why is it a $90,000 ask in our budget if it's 45,000 for the part that's really in bad repair? Is there a way we can look at something as, if it's a safety thing, I get that, but?
And thank you, Counselor McCabe. And I appreciate that, and as we all are. And that 45,000 quote just came in probably at 4:00 PM this afternoon. So that's why it wasn't included.
Okay, Counselor Matard.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I guess maybe we probably should take the opportunity to, to revisit the internal resources that we were not able to get an answer for. Here we are. It's been noted that there, nobody got back to you. So I think it'd be prudent for someone to get back to them and, and provide some decision as to whether or not the city could fix that or not. And if they can't, great, we'll move forward and figure out what it is. But to take that off the table right now is not, I think we need to explore that. That could be a savings. That'd be a little bit on the operational side, but maybe a lot less on the capital side.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead, Counselor McCabe?
To the chair, I guess.
Yeah, no, I agree 100%. I mean, I think we did plan on that, and it was left with, that was the understanding that we would try to partner to provide cheaper, cheaper work.
Well, no, no. Better's work, quality work.
Cheaper financial money.
Financially saving, yeah.
Correct.
Financial saving. We don't do cheap work here. So what's it at? 90, 45? What, what are we going with?
Going to look at a partnership again, whether it's with Public Works and Bella Lion, to see what that can look like before we start saying. I mean, they're saying there's a safety part of it that needs to be done. So if the safety part, for sure, the other part, can it wait? What's it costing? I mean, I don't think it's clear enough. He just got to vote at 4:00.
We'll take it out and then come back to it.
Why don't you, you have your public works manager here.
Yeah.
We have people trained at, at inspecting sidewalks that we do every year. So why don't let them team up tomorrow or the next day, see what our staff says, see if something that they can do. And if they can't, then we'll continue on with the, the funding for it. If they can't, great.
Okay. So just take the 90 out. Yeah. Well, no. It's, it's right there. Sidewalk replacement arena parking lot, 90,000, and times 13.13, that gets the percentage of, well, U P E I pays 30%. Okay. If we just take it out completely, then we'll find out later. Park it. Okay, what's the other issue? The lots resurfaced? Is that what it is, Alan?
Yes, your worship.
That's the, oh, yeah.
The other spot that was, there was a lot of discussion surrounding was the staff lot resurfacing. So with that, all the counselors that did mention that are correct. We have recently had our arena parking lot and our aquatics parking lot resurfaced. This is our staff parking lot, which is to the north of the building. This is where the Zamboni entrance is, just around the back. Our staff park there. That is where the garbage container is, is located. That's where all the team buses come in to unload and load people on and off. And it's, it's getting in quite bad shape. I believe it's still original from the, when the building was built.
Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, just one question. Who owns the land?
University.
So we are funding 85% for the arena in Cary, in the pool. So we are funding 85% for the arena in Cary, the pool. So we're still looking after all the property.
We got a 99-year lease, $1 a year. Good deal.
But my point is that if we're looking after the operational and the capital for the arena and the pool and everything, like the parking lots, if it's owned by the university, you almost think they would be chipping in a bit.
13%.
Oh, wow, yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, we don't own the land, but we own the building. 87% of it. That's for sure. So is the building. So is the pool. Well, the deal was signed back in 2004, guys. I can't break the deal now. I'd like to... Well, we paved the parking lot, the visitors' parking lot there a couple of years ago at $400,000, right? That's what we have. That's what we signed on to. It's like the airport. Transport Canada owns it. The businesses out there, just rent the land, lease it. Okay, Council McKay, did you want to?
Yeah, just, Council Rebecca and I are talking. That $90,000 is not really $90,000, correct?
Nope.
It's going back, so can someone change that? So it reflects that? If it's $45,000 instead of $90,000? Just good mathematics, your worship.
Do we know it's 45, or are we just gonna leave it? And then have our Public Works Chief Engineers right there in the audience, get them out there, inspect it, and maybe look at the work?
Thank you, your worship. The original quote was $490 to complete the full piece of concrete there. What I suggested, or what I said just came in today, was just for a small portion to replace. The main ramp coming out of the parking lot was 45. So if we can, I'm not sure how you'd want to handle that, but I would like to leave the 90 if possible, and then have somebody from Public Works come out and take a look at it and see what they deem can be done in that case. And if we're able to partner, that would be great. And then we can look at moving that number or getting rid of that number.
Yeah. Good. Okay, leave the 90. Is that what we're doing? Well, it's, we'll work out the 13%, yeah. Okay, the other one is recharge-in stations? Is that the EV charging?
There was some questions, thank you, your worship. There was some questions surrounding that. So with the EV charging stations, we have applied for and received a grant for $40,000. So that is the net amount. So what we're looking at doing is putting in three EV stations, two in the arena parking lot, one in the aquatics parking lot. Each one of those EV stations will charge two cars. So we'll have six chargers there. And after the rebate or the grant amount, the amount will be $28,000.
Okay. Questions? My question was that I thought we could do it through our Environment and Sustainability Department, because we are, we got 19 that are throughout the city, and we could bring this as part of our inner loop. But do you already have EV charging stations out there?
No, your worship, we don't. And if there is another way to partner with you guys, that is, that would be great. It just would be, we have looked and had some studies done on the types of EV charging stations. So if it was, depending on what level it is, we would have to look at that. Because the, one of the levels that are the quick charging stations would start spiking our maritime electric rates. And that could cause some issues and more fees on the operational side.
So you're going with level two or level three?
Level two. We have, these are for level twos.
Okay, do we want to do that? Try to do something with our department, Environment Sustainability? Go ahead, sorry.
I would like to see us look at how much use the chargers that we've put around our buildings are actually getting. And I think that would be through Environment Sustainability. Have a sense of, you know, how much is being accessed? And would it make more sense to take those and put them at a building that we own 87% of and we know would be used quite often? That would be what I'd like to see.
Council McKay?
I'll throw that in Julie. Is there others charging stations located around the university?
I believe so. Thank you, councillor. I believe the university has multiple charging stations.
Up in the visitors' parking lot.
Yes, but how many they have, I'm unaware.
There's at least four in that parking lot up by the UPI Student Union Building. Four. They're level two. I've used them. City vehicle. Okay, councillor. Anything else? Good? Good to go?
Just for clarification, so we're leaving the EV chargers in? Or we're going to?
They're gonna check with Environment, but I guess we'll leave them there. But it'd be great to work with our manager of Environment Sustainability. Jessica's in the back row there, and she's taking notes. Go ahead.
I'm not sure if there's any savings, because we're gonna have to pay for them to put them in. So you're talking about removing some that we have installed now in places and moving them?
Saying it would be good, because they've been in, like, they placed them when there was discussion, I don't know, three years ago, where we were gonna put them. It would just be good to see if they're actually being used, where they're placed. I don't even know exactly the locations that they're being placed. But I know, for example, Malcolm Darrah was gonna be a place that they talked about putting one. But I don't think I've ever seen an electric car plugged in across the street at Malcolm Darrah. So would that make more sense to put it in a location where it would actually be used? I just, there must be some way to evaluate, is there?
Yeah, they can tell the power drop.
Yeah, yeah, just to see. I think it would be interesting. And the same with the, in both notes, I would have your asphalt and sidewalk budgeting. I think we need a little more follow-up. From what I understand, the person they were trying to maybe reach out with has been off sick. So I don't know who you were trying to contact, but it would probably be better to contact the manager directly. And then we can see CCL and that, and make sure that the conversations are started around that partnership.
Okay.
I do have one more question for the manager.
EV chargers or something else?
No, the sidewalks. Because I walk them every second day, and I never really... Can it wait another year? The only thing I see is a few spider cracks. I don't see any lifting or anything. And I walk this every day.
Thank you, Council Bernard. Could it wait a year? Possibly. But the one thing you're looking at, as you look into next year, is when we're continuing to get into even more significant funding for our capital projects. So when you're looking at some of these items, you're trying to look at some of the smaller pieces that you can get completed now. Because as of, with this capital budget, we have the beginning of the refrigeration system that we're looking to replace. So the piece that's in this year's, upcoming year's budget is the down deposit, basically to get the skid of the refrigeration built. And then what's gonna happen is, on the next year, when you see that it's over $4 million, that's when they're coming, installing it, decommissioning the other one and putting it in place. And then you'll see the other charge for $1.5 million. That'll be the deposit for Rink A. And then they'll be coming in to do that. So there's some substantial amounts that are being looked at and that we're asking for over the next few years. So that's why we had those smaller amounts in this year's.
Yeah. And this equipment is 20 years plus. It's 20 years old. It's original equipment, correct?
It is, yes, it is, your worship. It is, it is original equipment. And this equipment has been maintained very well, but it's also 20 years old and has been used year-round. So we've, the last time they were in to do some of our compressor work, they said we have minimal, more times that we can actually redo these compressors. And we're, the last thing we want to do is have a major catastrophe where one of these completely shuts down, and we're out of business for a while.
Okay. All good? Well, that folds up. I think there are Dan and Betty. Council McLeir, I think that's it. Did you want to add something? No, we're good. Mayor Brown? Thank you. Good to go? Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Amy. Yeah. He is, Daniel taking down some notes with, yeah. Council Bernard? Good?
So I'm just wondering, your worship, are we gonna wait till the staff goes out and examines that sidewalk? Are we just gonna leave the money in? Are we gonna take it out?
That's my understanding, is leave the money in and send out the staff, and then we can do an assessment of it.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes, your worship. I think the concept would be that we, before we adopt this budget, that we would have the opportunity to go out and have a look and see if, see if we can get, cut that down or partner on it to get the cost.
I guess that I'm wondering if, you know, whoever inspects the sidewalks first could see if it even needs to be done.
Yeah? No, that's, we got sidewalk inspectors, asphalt inspectors, fiber network inspectors. Okay, Council Ramsey?
Yeah, and it'll be the last time that I'll talk about this. But like, I go into Cary as much as anybody, I guess, because granddaughters and watching the Panthers. But that little strip going up, like, either the price of concrete either went through the roof or something's going on. But $45,000 for that little strip? I mean, you walk it up yourself, your worship, when you go there. Like, it's unbelievable, like, I don't know. Like, I'm still blown away that we're paving everything, and we don't own it. Yeah, but then they want the sidewalk done beside it, too. Like, I don't know.
Council McKay?
The manager, just to speak for a second.
Chief Engineer?
I think there's been some discussion. It might help if he gets us through this one-line, 25-hour budget item.
It's, okay.
Your worship, through to, through to Council McKay. So from sidewalk perspective, I just sent an email to my staff, connecting with the Bellinian folks, asking them to meet sometime this week to have a quick review of that sidewalk. So that should be done by the end of the week, hopefully. And I'll have a report and some photos along with that to share with you once I do receive that. So I'll circulate that with council after I receive that. In terms of the asphalt, there, when you're doing a parking lot, we would tender that separately as well, aside from a street resurfacing program. Street resurfacing program's a bit different asphalt, different crews typically. So we don't tender that together with the roadwork, because we don't get as good of a pricing as we would if we tender it separately. So typically, unless we were doing a big parking lot project, you know, we might work to combine those projects. But to combine with a road resurfacing program, it wouldn't, I don't think we would get any better value than they would getting quotes to do their, to do their asphalt work.
All right, thanks. And that's a pretty big parking lot, you know, for $40,000. But it's not a real, well, I mean, it's a drop-off parking lot. And it's, it'd be interesting to know if it's an area that needs to be done right now when we're trying to look at ways to resurface streets that residents or whatnot. You know, if it was, meant that the infrastructure was gonna fall off and there was gonna be sinkholes and, you know, can it last another year? Would be my question.
Just a response, councillor. It is a staff parking lot, but it's also the bus for the teams' drop-off as well. So during Canada games, I was in that area quite a bit. So all the teams from away were using that area. And it is in rough shape, but it's not just a staff parking lot back there.
Okay. So, Council Beck, you all right with everything? You know, you, no thoughts? You don't want to look at something else for the capital budget? Well, I thought you were, no, you were thinking of maybe another project we talked about, or you want to just leave it till? CCCO A? Confederation Center? Where the capital budget is done?
Oh, what we are doing with the Confederation Center?
Because it's capital. Capital. It's capital operational. Dan? Do you want to?
Sure. Thank you, your worship. I can give council an update. We had an opportunity to meet with our auditor last week to review audit preparations. And at that time, we brought the ask from the Confederation to the auditor just to get their opinion as to whether or not the ask from Confederation Center could be capitalized. I was down today to the Confederation Center, met with CFO there, had a look at the proposal and the plans. And the auditor's opinion is that we cannot capitalize that contribution. We can make a grant, but it would be an operating grant, similar to what we did last year, approving in May, you know, a $200,000 contribution pertaining to their $5 million ask over five years. But it was, was an operating grant. So as it relates to this specific proposal, it would be an operating grant, not a capital item. So not, not really much we can discuss at this point as it pertains to the capital budget. I can advise, though, that we did have some further discussion today, which leads us to believe that there may be another opportunity for the city to acquire some assets that would move towards supporting their ask while facilitating the city acquiring some assets. So it's still very much in preliminary stage, but suffice to say that we'll be pursuing that with the Confederation Center staff and hopefully get, bring something back to council in the next little bit. But it would be a long-term asset, capital asset, that we would look to acquire.
Council Beck?
Well, I guess that's just what I was trying to understand. I think there was, with regards to this project, personally, I'm, I'd love to see us get behind it. I think it's, it can be a tremendous asset to our city. And, but again, I want to work within what the rules or regulations are. And if there's an opportunity to look at a way of advancing it. If I'm wondering, what I'm hearing right now, there was a request, basically, I think, 3.75 over five years, correct? For capital expenditure?
Over four, but they go over five.
Okay, and they could go over five. So that is off the table, as it stands right now.
The other option, do you want to explain, Dan?
Well, I just, I just heard, if I, if I heard it correctly, there's an opportunity to acquire something that could be capitalized. Currently, as it stands, we can't capitalize it the way it is. But through negotiations, there may be some opportunities to potentially capitalize something or to acquire an asset that would be capitalizable, if you will. So when you'll continue those discussions and then come back here for further discussion at a later time.
Yeah. And to be clear, the scenario we're looking at is that the city would actually purchase an asset, a herd asset that we would be able to put on our, on our balance sheet. Versus what, the scenario now, we would be looking at an operating grant. You know, if you wanted to commit to a half a million you know, if you wanted to commit to a half million or a million every year for the next four years, whatever we do, it won't show up on our balance sheet, it's just an expense each year as we, as we advance those funds, so it's, it's a different scenario.
Yeah, okay, so when you say the next little bit, what, what does that mean, Dan?
Soon, soon.
Yeah, about how, what are we talking?
Could be a week.
Well, as I say, Mr. Bellamy was out of town today, so we didn't have the opportunity to talk, but it was based on a discussion that I had with CFO, and very much a high level, perhaps we, we might be able to consider this, and so they'll have to do due diligence with senior management at the Confederation Center, probably take it to their board and, and, and work, work something through, so I wouldn't expect it would be a, a tomorrow turnaround, but hopefully we would get some indication, you know, some, somewhere coming into the next month or so, but maybe sooner, but I, I don't have a, haven't had the chance to discuss it with Mr. Bellamy, and he would have a board of directors that he reports to as well, so.
So if it's in the next month, it's, we're not addressing it here on this?
No, it could be similar to the East Link, they, they come back, they, they may be looking at a big project, too. Eleanor, CAO?
Thank you, Worship, so I, what I would suggest, if there is interest from counsel in supporting something like this, that a million gets set aside in the capital, and the two-hundred thousand that was in operating be removed from operating, and a hundred thousand of the two-hundred thousand be used to service that million dollars that you're setting aside in capital, so it's there, and then staff can work with the Confederation Center to see if this opportunity actually is viable, and then your money's set aside, and if it isn't, then you'll have the million that you can reallocate somewhere else, once we've, so we can move forward.
Go ahead.
And maybe I'm wrong, I thought the two-hundred thousand that we were giving to Confederation Center in the budget was another agreement.
Um, through Your Worship to Counsel Bernard, there's three-hundred thousand under agreement with them, and the two-hundred thousand was to go towards this ask that they were making. Yeah, so we gave them two-hundred thousand last year, and then there was two-hundred thousand set aside this year.
Yeah, yeah, just remember, Counsel Bernard, it's a seventy-two-million-dollar project, okay, the legislative assembly is a hundred-and-forty-five, and sixteen million is with the Shell Town Library and Center, all with federal, provincial, municipal partners, not, not this assembly, provincial assembly, but we always go to the other levels of government looking for money, now an NGO working with two other levels of government are saying, could you be part of it, and it's only a seven percent contribution to the total project, which is, if you look at the multiplier effect of seventy-two million, it's probably two or three times that, and it benefits local contractors, suppliers, and other service, service industries, so it's a good deal for all of us, so hopefully we can get something worked out, Dan, and it'll be coming back. So everything else, we're ready to go with the, the budget as is. Counsel Beck?
So are we, are we going on Eleanor's recommendation that we leave the million dollars in there, take the two-hundred thousand out of operational, is that what I'm hearing?
Go again, what's that? Just use your mic.
It's a hundred thousand of operation to pay for a million dollars capital, so if you want to put a million into Confederation Center, you got two-hundred thousand, once you put the other million in sidewalks, give you two-hundred thousand to pay for.
We'll come to that, okay?
All right.
That's operational. Good, perfect, all right. What's that? Uh, I think what was suggested by CAO Eleanor, correct, and then, yeah, good?
So we're taking a million and using it and giving it a hundred thousand?
No. CAO Eleanor, just explain it once more, no, no, just, it's, it's, it's a little complicated. No, 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 and that's, that's what she's going to do, good, good question, go.
Thank you, Worship, so the operating budget has three-hundred thousand dollars that were under agreement with the Confederation that we give them every year, and then there's two-hundred thousand that was set aside to go towards their ask, because we couldn't, we didn't think you'd be able to capitalize. Now there's a capitalizing opportunity, and as Dad, Dan had said earlier tonight, for every million that you throw into capital, the debt servicing is about a hundred thousand.
Ten percent, yeah.
So we would take the two-hundred thousand that we had set aside in operating, get that out of there, um, one-hundred thousand would, one million would be set aside for Confederation, a hundred thousand of the two-hundred thousand would then be the debt servicing, and then, um, what Counsel Bernard is suggesting is then that we take another million, and we take the other hundred thousand, and we use that to service that debt, it was for sidewalks, you were suggesting sidewalks.
No, we can get that million from what we're not going to give to the East Link, we already saved a million, right? Yeah, just put that million in, oh, yeah, that. Yeah, parking means we're, we're not going to deal with it now in this budget, deal with it in the future, okay. Good to go? You look all content, can we move from this budget to operational? Good? Three million.
So we're adding a million to sidewalks?
Yes. Yes. Counsel Dron?
So, if I'm understanding, that you're putting aside a million dollars for the Confederation Center, and we don't know what the ask is, like, we're, we're looking at a possible asset, which would mean buying a piece of it, like, I, I just, you know, we're, we're okay with the capital budget, but we don't really know what's coming down the road, so are we just putting a million dollars there and then we're going to talk about it next week or the week after, or is that how it's playing out?
Yeah, Counsel Dron, if, if it does go to the next step, it would have to be in a closed session, because it is, um, something that has. Yeah, so with, what section is that, one, section 119 subsection 1F, that's why we would just want to put it there now, and if it does get, looks like it's going somewhere, it'll be discussed next week, in a closed session.
So they don't just automatically get it now?
No, 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 there's, there's no automatic, it's, it's, it's just parked there, uh, but it, if, if we can exercise it, because something can materialize through the, uh, discussions with the CCOA, then it'll come back to this council, and it'll be discussed in a closed session under contractual agreement. Dan, did you want to add something?
Uh, no, just would like clarification in terms of the sidewalk new construction, we had added two million previously, is it?
Add another, another million. It, well, one, two plus one, three, three million, three mil, and a dol, and a dollar sign behind it. No, it's act, like, hold on, it's ATPs, MUPPs, concrete sidewalks. Counsel Dron, is that good?
Yeah, that, that's great, thank you.
And you, you're all right with adding another million to sidewalks, ATPs, MUPPs, what else, et cetera? Good?
I, I guess so, that's a, that's a large ask, but I, I guess, guess I'll go along with it, everybody wants that.
Okay, okay, so it looks like the end is in sight. Counsel McKinnon?
Uh, just to comment, um, I know we, we're now playing with a large number for sidewalks, when we came from nothing to three million, I'd just like to see fairness across the city, or if counsel has a say in what sidewalks and ATP pathways are going to be done, more so than just going off the list that's there, so if we're going with this kind of number, I think it should be fairness across the city.
Counsel Beck?
Yeah, I, I thought we had a, there was a sidewalk plan.
Yeah, there is a list, can you put the list up there?
It's right here.
Should be there.
Yeah.
There it is, right there. That's, that's the forum.
It's, that's about four, and that, those first boxes.
Yeah, anyways, let's.
Go through the design work and stuff's already been done.
Yeah.
They're ready to go, and it keeps working and less than prices.
Yeah, Chief Engineer already said some design work's done, so there they are, right there.
So, so what are we at, Dan? Uh, okay, yeah, that's what I was looking for there, so we're at fifty-five, two-seven-seven?
Yeah.
For our capital.
Is that what we have, Dan, right now, fifty-five?
Fifty-five, three-seven-five. Keeps changing there, Danny, what are you doing? Fifty-five, three-seven-five, that's what our capital budget is at right now, after all the, our gazetas and our, counting our fingers, counting our toes.
Well done, well done. Okay. Counsel Ramsey?
Is that the number we're all very comfortable with, or, or with, that you're very comfortable with, or? That's your, yeah, is that your magic number, I guess?
I, I guess from my perspective, Counsel, uh, that, that's a number that I can live with, I mean, I, I'm certainly more comfortable around thirty, thirty-five in, in the longer term, um, but, but we have significant needs, and we've had to make choices about what infrastructure we're going to be able to afford to put in place, and that's just a fiscal reality that we have going, so we're, you know, we're, we're pushing the envelope a little bit in terms of what we can weather, we're, you know, we're, we're using our, our surplus from the current year to, to fund some additional spending next year, but we're, we're looking forward to growth in the city, we're hoping for growth in funding from the province, and we, you know, as, as an administration, will continue to work hard, monitor expenses, and try to get efficiencies where we can, and, you know, I think it's a reasonably good starting point for, for the new fiscal year, considering where we started and, and the, the long list of, of asks that we, we have dealt with, I think the department heads have worked hard to try to identify projects that perhaps can be deferred and, and considering the costs of, of doing those things, uh, so I think we have, we have a, a reasonably sustainable plan at this stage.
Very good, sir, thank you.
Okay, ready to move on to operational, so you're going to draft two for your operational? And Cindy, that was sent to the thirteenth, it's an update, I think? It's in your OneDrive? Yeah, it's coming on the big screen. There it is now, there it is. Okay. Let me just get mine here. So you'll notice that line thirty-eight, it's, in your budget, it, it's, uh, it's different than the two-forty-five, it's, it's a deficit, and that's, is that total, no, wait, now, can you go down a little bit? Yes, now it's, what's her, over one-twenty-one ahead? Is that what we are, Dan?
Yeah. Sorry, Worship, Betty's just going to have a look at that, um, yeah. It was, I believe, two-seventy-eight deficit forecast.
Go ahead.
Sorry, um, we did take out the two-hundred thousand, uh, operating grant for the Confederation Center, um, which would have reduced that to a seventy-thousand-dollar deficit, so we're into another hundred-and-fifty, so Betty'll, Betty'll hunt that down anyway.
Yeah, but you, you took a hundred, not two-hundred, right? A hundred to service the, the million-dollar debt. Yeah, but you're not taking that just from the operational two, CCOA, are you? Betty?
Well, at the moment, I've taken the two-hundred thousand grant out, um, I'll need to look at the effect on the depreciation, the servicing of the one million separately.
So there'll be no grant to CCOA?
Well, it's the one million, isn't it? It's one million capital instead of two-hundred thousand operating.
So a hundred to service the million, and a, a hundred to service the other million for the sidewalks, is that what we're doing? Yeah, okay, so by replacing, dropping the hundred, the, the million from the East Link Center, that, we're not paying that debt, we're not servicing that, which would be ten percent, which would be a hundred thousand, too.
The, uh, the operating budget doesn't work live and update the, the capital changes, so, um, there's, there's a little bit of work to, to.
Okay, okay.
Run all those through the operating budget.
So what we, so we have one-twenty-one to the good, correct?
Yeah, I, I would, I would say we're, we're very close to, to a balanced operating budget at this stage, considering the, the, uh, using the forecast surplus, so, you know.
A little better than that for the end of this night.
Yeah, and I said, as I said, we're, we're basically rounding error, very close, so, um, I, I think you can consider this ground zero and, and continue your discussions on other operational issues.
Okay, Counsel McLeer, how do you want to take it? Go through right from the top, like, through your, your operation, then come back to your initiatives, what do you want to do?
Let's, uh, let's go through from the top and then go to, go to new, the new initiatives.
Do you wish to start, Dan, or what, how do we?
Was the wish of counsel, do we want to have department heads go through each of their budgets again?
Look, I don't think we have to go through in detail, because we've already went through this once, so we should be able to, yeah, well, I think we want to go through some of the revenues, it's, it's been changing, it's been changing over first draft, second draft, so any questions on it in the first part? Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Worship, um, yeah, so, so we, we went from, from the two-seventy-eight in, in, in the red to a hundred-and-twenty-one, we think, in the positive, and I'm just wondering for easy work for everybody, as like I said earlier, so new initiatives is usually the last thing we do, and that's, that's at a cost of two, two million and fifty-three thousand, so do we want to say that we're, we're two million, one-seven-three in the good right now, and then go through all the budgets and then see what's left, and then then go through the net, the new initiatives? Because right now, we're actually up two-point-one-seven-three.
Are you looking for where new initiatives are in the budget? No, if you look at twenty-four, twenty-five, it's headed budget, new initiatives? Okay, drop down.
You'll see two-point-seven, and then six-ninety-three of that is the housing accelerator, so take that off, and it comes to two million and fifty-three thousand, and then if we're one-twenty in the good, then we're two-point-one-seven-three, so, which is not bad shape, going into, going into looking at everybody's budget.
Just, just, I'm just looking at Dan, okay, just repeat?
Sorry, I'm not, I'm just not following, um.
Counsel Bernard?
Counsel Bernard's, yeah.
Okay, Counsel Bernard, go, what column are you looking at, what line?
Right, right now, Dan, right now, you're saying we have, we're a hundred-and-twenty in the block, correct?
Yes, uh, based on the work Betty's done so far on the operational side, yeah.
Okay, and, and you have a cost of the new initiatives at two million fifty-three thousand?
The cost I show for the new initiatives is, is a net of one-point-eight-five-three.
See, but we're going, we're, Dan, we're going to your, I'm looking at your sheet from Friday that you sent out, the numbers are different.
All right.
Well, that's, but he's referring to his updated sheet that.
We, we can revert to the sheet from, from.
Ours was not.
But the one-point-eight-five-three, is, is that today, or is that, is that?
That is, that is today.
That's right.
And I think the difference is we, um. CCOA, but.
Well, we still had it in, because you had to pay the hundred thousand for each loan coming out of operational.
That's going to go down in your depreciation cost.
Yeah, my apologies, some changes got made today that I, I don't have a clear accounting on, so apologies for that, but, um, let's go back to the, um, document that we sent out on Friday, that, that you would have in your package, and we can go.
Do you have it there, can you bring that up?
I'll, I'll pull it up, yeah.
Yeah, let's go with that.
If you look at that, Dan?
Yeah, he's going to go back to his document that he sent out on Friday. That's where it shows, in brackets, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand for line forty-two. Yeah, just one sec, he's, he's just going back to.
Oh, I see what he did, he took that two, oh, okay, I see, here we got one-point-eight now. Okay, Dan, so, see under new initiatives?
Yes.
Line thirty-three, where you have two-point-five-three?
Yeah.
Two million fifty-three thousand?
Yes.
Um, and if you move, so you're showing a deficit there, so if, if, if you take the, the two million and fifty-three?
Uh huh.
And that's subtract the two-seventy-eight is what we have right now in surplus for the city. We'll go through the, we'll go through the, the different departments' budgets.
Yes.
See how counsel feels about that, and then you look at the new initiatives and see what you want to do for new initiatives with the money we have left over, and we'll see what that is when we go through all the departments.
Yep, we can look at it that way.
Okay. So if you look, if you use those numbers, we're up one-point-seven-seven-four, but I know you've changed that, you're saying it's, it's one-twenty in the, in the, in the, in the block now.
Yeah, let's, let's just go with the.
At minimum, it's one-seven-seven, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So given that, um, you know, I think we can start the discussion on the new, new initiatives and, and, um. and we'll factor in the changes as best we can as we go.
Probably should go through the departments first.
I think what we've done in the past is went through the departments and then come back to the new initiatives.
Yeah. Because these are the department budget asks, right? So I know I have some questions on some of the budget asks.
Okay.
So we'll bring the department heads up one by one and go through any questions that you may have, starting with city government?
City government.
Okay.
So Eleanor can answer from her position as CAO.
Your Worship, rather than going through line by line...
No, we're not.
What I would like to suggest we do is answer any specific questions there are within each budget.
Yep.
So I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay. So anyone that had any questions under the city government? The CAO is...
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So Eleanor, just looking at the 2324 budget of 4.1 million and 3.5 was spent. So we're asking for 4.1 again. So I'm just wondering why, if we only spent 3.5, why we're asking for the 4.1? You're up almost $600,000.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Councilor Bernard. I think, I mean, if you go down through each line, you can see through salaries and benefits, we didn't fill all the positions. So we spent less in that regard. There's a good news story there. We didn't have all the legal fees that we normally do. We're at 378 so far this year. I'm just trying to see what other discrepancies there are in there. Staff development, so we could've spent more in there. We also have had new staff come on. So I think it's beneficial to keep at least status quo budget for that. I'm just trying to see if I, like, there's not any other really huge ones. I think it's just more of a collective of underspending in certain areas. So I wouldn't necessarily say that we would trim back any area per se. And that's why we've come back with a status quo.
Okay, so... Okay, but the status quo was up about 90,000. So anyway, the salaries and benefits, or is it salaries and benefits? Yes, it is. Solicitors' fees. So 400 was budgeted, we spent 378. We're looking at 450. I'm just wondering, since we went through what we went through over the last year with BDO and all the legal expenses, would we need to have that as high? Can that pare down? I think if we did an average over the last four or five years, might give us a better indication. I would hope we're not going to go through another legal year worse than this one.
Thank you, Councilor Bernard. I think at this point, in previous presentations, there was that corporate plan matrix that I shared. And in that corporate plan matrix was a listing of many, many, many bylaws that need to be updated. And generally, all those bylaws would go through legal before they come through council. So there's quite a bit of work, which also became evident in the last week or so, even on our council code of conduct bylaw, which a lot of that would be through legal as well. So I do anticipate that there is going to be quite a bit of legal work for us to engage with.
Okay, so you think that needs, you don't think, can't put the same amount in? That wouldn't offset what we went through with BDO?
If council wanted, we could probably take it back to 400,000. But I wouldn't suggest cutting it more than that because there's also different negotiations that have on lawsuits, whatnot, the unpredictable kind of stuff that comes up throughout the year.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so what are you suggesting? 450 to 400, is that what you're saying?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else?
There was one other area that we staff were talking about earlier on today in looking at this budget. If we were to trim something else out would be the 24,000 under equipment repairs and rentals. And that's just a category from kind of yesteryear that hasn't been spent. So if we were looking for money, that would be another one that I would take out.
Yeah, none spent last year. Okay.
Anything else? The other counselors?
Was the auditing one under finance? I think it was, wasn't it? Professor...
What's that?
That would be under Betty's budget, finance and fiscal services.
Okay.
Okay, just one second. Counselor Beck?
Yes, so I see some overlap here with some of the new initiatives and some of this here because we're recommending a city solicitor. So that would cut into the 400,000, assumedly, would it not? Isn't that part of the idea of what we're trying to do here is to have in-house counsel that can more quickly address legal questions that we have that are easily addressable with in-house? And then when we do have to go outside to get secondary solicitor's advice, then we leave it in that budget there. So again, I think we're kind of, we got our toes dipped into things here. Where with the, if we approve the city solicitor, which I am not against, does our figure remain at $400,000? Or does it change, go from 400,000 down to assumedly 200? Yeah. So, but again, do we leave it in there? Are we leaving it at 400,000 with the solicitor in there still? Or are we reducing the amount that we're actually budgeting for?
I guess when we do new initiatives, that's when the decision will be made.
Well, I think, I guess when we're going through department by department, some of the new initiatives are impacting the department by department stuff. And this would be one of them. Where we're potentially looking at hiring a solicitor to offset or to reduce some of the costs that we are currently expending on legal fees.
Yeah, no, but not only that. It's also, if you're talking about what is intertwined here, so is the director of community services. That's in city government.
Exactly.
Through to Counselor Beck. Yes, the intent is, if you look under the new initiatives, it has the cost of the city solicitor is zero. Because the intent is that we would reduce the amount here for solicitor fees in accordance with what the salary would be.
Okay.
So the budgets that are presented here are your status quo budgets. And the new initiatives are your new money, your new asks on top of that. So that's why it's showing. So if we didn't go forward with the city solicitor position, this would be the amount of money that would be in.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, and the only thing I caution, and I mentioned to you here one other night, I think there was a study done a few years ago on this very topic. And it was, what came out was, you can get your own solicitor, but you have a suite of lawyers now expertise in the different areas that the city may need litigation on. So if your lawyer doesn't have that expertise, you're going to be going, calling and getting that anyway. So the fear was, you probably wouldn't say better. So... Anyway.
Good? Okay, still going through it? Any other? Counsel Bernard again? Counsel Bernard, are you following along? Can you see the screen?
Yes, I have the screen. But I was thinking that we're going to go through different departments, are we not?
Yeah, we're at city government right now, line 97.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, any more, any more issues about city government? Good? Want to come back to, we have to. Strategic priorities? Which is... No, you got environment sustainability there, sir. But strategic priorities falls under, does that fall under city government? Yeah, yeah. And so does communications? Yeah. So this communications, information technology is also under city government? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So you get those four areas, strategic, city government, strategic priorities, communications, information technology. Anything? Go, hold on there, Counselor Bernard, just one sec. We want to get you live, Mike. Go ahead there, you're live.
Just looking at the desktop software. Oh, that was the... We didn't have anything that in capital, I don't think. I think that was all hardware, was it Rory? For your capital, if I go back to that?
Sorry, if I understand the question, you're saying the capital requests are all hardware?
Only, this is for subscriptions and purchases, right?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, you're not cap, okay, that's operational. Okay, there's quite an increase here. So what are you expecting the increase there to be?
For the desktop software subscriptions. So that's going from, where are we, about 103? Yeah, so the projections are based on staff levels. So most of that is from Office 365 and supporting licenses. So our staffing level didn't quite go as high as I expected. And the prices did not increase. They are now forecast to be increasing this year. So with the increased staffing numbers, that's where we're projecting a little bit higher.
Okay. Good, Counsel Bernard, are you another, do you want to follow up? So our network support and maintenance agreements, that was with old Oracle. We're gone from there. So that's with Microsoft 360?
So the network software, network support and maintenance agreements, it covers a kind of a vast array of agreements that we have. Yeah, so it covers things like Great Plains, other software that's kind of hosted in the cloud but isn't related to software that gets installed on a computer.
Okay. Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you. Phones, Rory, that's everything from a cell phone to every phone up around in the whole organization? Is that what that means? Because 395, 403, and then 380, okay?
Yep, that's correct.
That's for every, everything going?
Yeah, and that would also include some of the PICX radios. It's kind of everything related to...
Airwaves.
Radios, airwaves, yeah, landlines. We also, yeah, we have a separate one for internet, but everything else falls under that phones category.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Worship. I'm just going to go back to Eleanor one more time.
Which one?
On the salaries and benefits against city government. I'm just doing some quick math here and just want to make sure this is right. So the 2,070,000 that was budgeted, we spent 1.8. Then we're asking now 2.160. So that's 360,000 more than what we spent. Do you think that will all get spent? Eleanor, the 360,000 now in salaries? That's salaries and benefits, I guess.
Through to Counselor Bernard. I think so. Part of this was the amount of time that it took to recruit the directors. So we only just had the director start in the last couple of months. So there's a lot of space there that was freed up. The other one is a maternity leave. And there's one other position in there that I was waiting to fill until I had directors in place. So I didn't have an additional person reporting to me. And then there's also the, how we did the hiring last year. We did staggered hiring, so we didn't hire everyone right off the bat. So across the different groups, people were hired at different times, right?
Okay. Okay, so the increase is for new hiring. Really, it's what it comes down to, 2.07, and then go to 2.169. Okay. 159, sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rory, just on your phones, we did get a, with the Bell, Bell Alliant sponsorship agreement, was there a $50,000 credit to our service?
Yeah, so Bell applies, they would typically have applied a credit every year. That agreement expires December of this year, but the credits expired December of 2023.
It did expire 2023?
Yeah, so the contract is still in place, but the discounts are no longer in place.
No, because the 75,000 is now going to Bell Alliant Center.
No, so the, when the agreement was first signed, the discounts were given to the city a year in advance. They were backdated. So the, kind of the contract was dated. I'm not sure exact, can't remember the exact date. But the way it was worked out, the discounts were applied a year ahead of when the contract would expire. So the discounts are gone, but we are still contracted with them.
Yeah, yeah, it was a 10-year agreement. It was signed in 214, or 2014 or 2015?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Anything else, guys? Counselors? Move on? Okay. Next one is environment and sustainability. And we do have Jessica here. Any questions about that? And we have transit switch as part of it. Looks good. Questions, comments? Okay. Good to move on? Economic development, and thank you, Jessica. Great to see you. Economic development, tourism, culture, Laura Lee. She's here. So it's economic development, tourism, economic development, culture, economic development events, attraction, tourism, accommodation, levy, expenses, and a budget of 5.1 million. Or round it up, 5.2. Looks good. Silence means move on. Okay, finance, audit and fiscal services. Counsel Bernard, Counsel Dran, anything? If you just wave your hand there on the screen, we'll bring you in.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Bernard on finance, audit and fiscal services. Counsel Bernard?
I'm just wondering, on the professional auditing services, big jump from 78,000 to 378,000. Well, it was 78,900, I guess, last year, and it's 377 is the ask this year. I'm just wondering why such a big jump, $300,000?
Who answers that? Is that you, Dan? Betty?
Yeah.
Betty's ready.
The professional auditing services is not quite the right description. We could either change it to professional and auditing services or just professional services. Because in the past, the 78 or 75,000 is just for the audit. But we've added an additional amount for our needs assessment and possibly negotiations with the province.
Yeah, but I think that could also evolve into an ask that we have, we're looking at doing with the province.
Mm-hmm. Well, it was to benchmark some money if we needed it for that.
So did you benchmark 160 for that? 300 for the needs assessment?
And the negotiations.
So this...
Go ahead.
Just so I'm clear, so the 78,900 that we spent last year, Betty, was for also professional services?
That was for professional services for the audit.
Okay. And now, now we're saying we want professional services plus needs assessment and negotiations?
That's on the taxing equity between the province and the municipalities.
So if you put 100,000 in for that, would that be enough? Make it 180,000? Does it need to be almost 400,000?
Well, on our needs assessment, RFP, we had quite a range of bids, and one of them was well over $100,000 just for that. So, but then that one seemed to be, would give us a broader amount of work. So allowing for that amount, plus an amount for negotiations, 300,000 seemed like a reasonable amount. We don't really know what it will be, but that seemed like a reasonable amount.
Okay. Yeah, but again, Betty, are we doing it on our own? Are we going to work with F, Federation Province and municipal municipalities? Like, there's some, a couple of balls up in the air here.
Your Worship, I can answer that question. Certainly, the hope is that the province, through municipal affairs, will assist with some of the foundational work. There was a good portion of the work to be done in the needs assessment when the responses from the proponents came back. So that was the reason we suggested that the province undertake that work for the good of not just our municipality, but other municipalities, and for the province to kind of understand where we stand now in relation to, in comparison to other provinces, and their sharing of revenue from property taxes, and who provides the services. So the hope is that that would come, so certainly that could be well reduced. In one of the proposals, you know, there was a substantial percentage, I can't disclose because those are confidential submissions, but it was a substantial portion of a very substantial number for a good deal of work that was really foundational work for everyone.
Okay. Council Ramsey?
Okay, Your Worship, election 75,000, could somebody explain that to me, please? What's that for?
What line? Oh, other. Who's got that, Betty?
Yes, we budget $75,000 each year, so that when we do come to an election year, we have some money saved up for that. So rather than have the big hit one in four years, we spread it out over the four-year period.
Can you just follow up, Your Worship?
So Betty, what does it cost the city to run their election? What do we pay elections P E I for to run the election? Would you know, every, once every four years, the number?
I have looked it up before, and I have known it at a point in time. I must admit I don't have it available right at the moment. It's approximately four times 75,000.
Four times what, sorry?
Four times 75,000. So 75,000 every four years is about right, based on what we've done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Yes, go right ahead there, Councilman Tar, I didn't, saw your red light on, but I didn't recognize you. Council Bernard from Ward 2, Delverdale.
On that topic, there was some discussion I had at the Water and Zoo regarding a $20,000 contribution, and we talked about maybe combining those together, or just having one where it's coming at a city administration. I'm looking down at the budget, I do see that it's not in the Water and Zoo budget any longer, so does that mean it's been moved up and, or we're just collecting 75 now as a whole? I think you were part of that discussion ahead.
Through You Worship too.
Go ahead, Betty.
Yes, we did just remove that 20,000. The 75,000 that we had in the city seemed to be sufficient.
Yeah, but the 20,000 was there because it's 33% of our share. So you should take the 20, it was always there, it should be there, it should be their part.
Well, the interesting thing is, we have budgeted the 20,000 every year, but I have yet to see a year where we've actually booked the entry for it. So we've had the budget, but we've never put the expense in.
Surplus.
I don't know why that has happened.
Oh, okay. Well, that's... Council McTard, another question, sir? Jeez, we want to... Okay. Insurance, you're all right, insurance? Fleet management? Okay, Council Bernard, good.
Fiscal services, I'm just trying to figure out the interest in the long-term debt. Last year, 2.1 million, and we're not doubling it, but we're awful close, we're well over 50%. I'm wondering why that's up to 3.5?
Was it up that much?
That's Dan.
2.1 to 3.5?
Thank you, Your Worship, through to Council Bernard. Yes, we have taken out significantly more long-term debt this fiscal year. We had an RFP go out last summer that we awarded in November for $50 million in new long-term debt, of which we've now drawn down 40 million of them. We had not taken out any new long-term debt since the end of 2019, early 2020, so it had been quite a while, but we have taken a big jump now.
Is that for, is that for the Simmons Arena?
That's for funding the capital budgets, so funding all capital expenditures, of which Simmons is one.
That would include the Eastern Gateway Waterfront, 14.2 million, with federal provincial funding. It's a big project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're down to fire, there's the chief down there, Chief Mayby. Do you want to do it from there, chief, or you want to come up to the... Okay, come on, huh? Okay. Council Bernard?
Thank you. Tim, I'm just wondering, I'm just going to go back, conversation we had the other night about the watercraft, 425,000, the capital. And I guess one thing I never asked was, the old one, what's the plans to do with the old one?
Chief? We can look to repurpose like we do with all equipment that we take out of service after the end of expiry of their time of life. We make it available to some of the departments with obviously the caveat, and they sign disclaimers for any misuse of the product, but we've had it serviced throughout the years, it has reached its life of expectancy, so it could be repurposed. Look throughout the city first, just like our redistribution and disposal bylaw calls for.
Yep, okay, so there's no money able to come back from that, you can't, we can't...
There'd be very little, maybe some on equipment, but no.
Not 100,000, right?
No, 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 very little.
Okay, okay. Because I'm still having an issue with, it's not our jurisdiction, and we're spending almost half a million dollars when the federal government should be spending it. If we're going to do this for them as a favor, I'd ask for the boat, but I mean, if we even get half, I just think it's a big pile of money of taxpayers for something that we're not responsible for. And I think if we're going to do it, and we would respond quicker than Coast Guard, I understand that, but I would be surprised that the federal government would not fund the boat, or at least fund this 50%. It just seems like a big chunk of money for something that's not our responsibility.
As far as the waterway goes, it is federal, but we also have permitted occupancies down there, they're on floating docks now, there's people down there enjoying the evenings and daytimes, there's licensed establishments, there's all kinds of boats that come in and obviously visit the Charvetown Marina, so we're responsible for all of that as well. When it comes down to jurisdiction and emergency services, it's get the call and go, sort of that aspect later, so we wouldn't definitely hold up any rescue attempts. Many times, we are the only vessel that gets in the water for different calls, different times a year. So it is a need.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand it's a need, and I wouldn't be against it, but I do think the federal government, anyway, it's a conversation I think really should be had. But, anyway. Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and I'm sure this is probably just money moved into a different line item, but I noticed office supply is at 51,000, and then we forecasted just 1,400, budgeting 1,600. I'm assuming that money is just moved into another area, or if we could just clarify that, thank you.
I don't know if that just got looped in. I believe the office supplies were about 1,632. The 50,000, I believe, last year was in regards to the Fire Run Rider survey that we asked for, and it was a project fund, and I don't see that line item, so maybe that's what happened there, is the 50 got combined with the 1,600, but it is only 1,600.
Council Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship, thanks, Tim. And I'm just going to piggyback on Council Bernard, he was asked the same questions that I was thinking about, but small craft, like, we've been asking someone to check with the federal people for some type of funding to help us with this, a partnership, and ever since I've been on board, because the former chief wanted a new craft also, and we never ever got an answer back. I'm just wondering why, I guess is, because, as we say, $450,000, and we know what's needed, and we know the response is great, but, like, I think they can find some money for us to help this thing, and I'm just wondering, it's, like, I've been here for 10 years now, and I think I've been asking for eight, you know, why can't we talk with the federal people? And I don't want to name names, but we never ever got back. So we just need an answer on that, I guess. Either they're going to help us with it, and we're going to go this alone, or what's the story? Thank you.
If I could just respond, Your Worship, through the councillor, agreed, and we're trying people, I guess we're going to keep trying until somebody says yes, that's, I guess, the essence of it here, but in the meantime, we need to move forward and make sure our operational readiness is maintained, but definitely will be hitting the doors.
Yeah. And council, we've already approved that under capital too, and I know you're just trying to see if we can get some money from the help out. Okay, good. Okay, human resources, who's speaking to that, Eleanor? Are you, are you the director, finance administration? Do you want to speak to it first, Council McTard, or you have some questions? Go ahead.
No, thank you, Your Worship.
It's hot, Mike.
You know, when I'm going through the budget, I'm looking primarily for myself, anything 50,000 plus and above, an increase. So just seeing the contract services, do we know exactly what those types of contract service would be, those negotiations in those areas? Because there's a significant jump there from 65 to 127, so we're doubling that.
Dan, you're answering for the human resources?
Uh, thanks, Council McTard. CAO was going to respond.
Oh, she's answering for it, okay, go ahead.
Through to Councilor McTard, I anticipated your question.
Oh.
And Emily has said that it's for negotiations, arbitration bills, harassment investigations, and all the Q B agreements are up this year, so that's why it's that much more.
I believe we touched upon this during our operational meeting, I just wanted to be noted here what the actual increase of that was. It's substantial from previous 23, thank you for that.
Okay. Looks like it's good. Mayor and council, where's Jackie? Call Sherry. Okay, that looks good. Parks and Recreation? That's our office? Oh, no, it's Office of the Mayor and Council, right there, Cindy? It's not just one office, no, no. Thank you, Council McCape, it's complimentary. Okay. Yes, sir? Go ahead, oh, jeez. I lost you there. Okay, go ahead.
Under the mayor and council, we went from 600,000 down to 400,000. That's quite a...
Yeah, so what's going on? What's going on for water and wastewater? In years previous, 180,000 was budgeted to water and wastewater, to share 33% of the cost for councillors and mayor, and this year, they're taking that directly out of water and wastewater, 180 is already there in the budget. So when we expend this amount, then we go to the 180 that's over in water and wastewater. In the past, it was part of, part of the budget, and now they want to separate it, so... Okay, write it down.
Good.
Okay. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Quinn's here, manager of the department. Any questions? Jackie just sent a text message, "You're funny, where's Waldo?" Thanks for watching, Jackie. Okay. Parks and Rec, looks good? Okay, oh, okay. This is the, thank you, Frank. Planning. Planning and Heritage. Deputy's here. Deputy, you're all right with the budget? Okay. Any questions about planning? Oh, Trevor, Council McKinnon, sorry.
Thank you, Your Worship, it's not about planning, just wondering if we can go back to line 272, I have a question on fleet management.
272.
Where it went from 4,000 to 226,000.
That's under other. Okay, and that falls under... That's under finance, that's... Under other expenses. That falls, I, no, well, for fleet management, it was 1.7 million. This is, that's what you're asking for, just a clarification?
Yeah, why it went from 4,000 to 226,000, and then ask of 229?
Through to the councillor, I'm not sure why it was up 4,000, I don't know that detail, but what this account is for is for the entire city's fleet registration, so motor vehicle registrations is what comes out of this account. Oh, yes, and enterprise, that's correct, my apologies, yes, and the remaining balance of the enterprise agreement. I think this is the last year, or do we have one more year of that as well? This, yeah, that's why I thought so too, my apologies.
Yeah, so that won't be there next year. That's, we were in enterprise fleet management, and then we moved on, right? Council McCape? Thank you, Colin, Council McCape, thank you very much. Yes, go ahead there, Council Ramsey?
It's not when the discussions were going on last year with enterprise fleet management that we can back out anytime at no cost of that contract. Was that not true or false?
No, it's when you return the vehicles, there was going to be a savings.
No, but I thought they said that if we signed a contract that we can back out anytime without any cost to the city, so it wasn't costing the city any money, so now all of a sudden we're seeing it did cost the city some money.
Chief Engineers here, you can explain.
Okay, Chief Engineer, you may just stay right up there, chief.
Yep, thank you.
Right?
Good question.
Yeah, we were told that, that's all.
Council Ramsey, good question.
Your Worship through to the councillor, so this is the financing of the vehicles that were purchased under that first year, and only one year of the enterprise agreement. So that's all that is, I think it was three years of purchases, or it was expensed over three years, and this is the third and final year of that purchase, the one and only purchase we did through that agreement before it was council by council. So that's all it was. So where you're, I think where the misunderstanding may be, the, there is a cost to the city, the city had to buy the vehicles, but there was about a million dollars of savings, what they're showing, over life of the proposal that they had put together, just in savings from fuel savings and the cost that we'd get back from selling the vehicles at a newer rate or nearer age versus what we were doing in that is essentially using the vehicle until they completely broke down and was too expensive to maintain them. So I think that's where maybe the confusion comes from, but no, there was always a cost to the city, just like we were always buying vehicles, we had to buy these vehicles, and this is the third installment of that first year of purchases that we did through that agreement.
Okay. Good. So planning's done, we're down to police. Council Kevin Ramsey, Chair of the Standing Committee.
Mayor, Chief Brad McConnell, how's that?
You didn't welcome the chief, Mayby.
Ran up there so fast, I just couldn't say hi to him.
Okay. Questions? Questions, concerns, Counselor Bernard?
I got a little bit different numbers here, just one sec. Anyway, basically, it looks like the police budget went up $2 million over last year. I'm assuming, Chief, that's the six officers that we hired, and equipment and vehicles, maybe... Well, it wouldn't be vehicles, I guess, but... Can you give me a breakdown of the 2 million increase? Chief?
Your worship, Counsel Bernard, certainly you're correct that the budget has gone up 2.1 million. $780,000 of that was for six new positions. $520,000 of that was for new provincially-sponsored positions, which are funding for going forward.
525,000?
520,000.
Was for what?
For the four provincial-funded positions.
So that's not at our cost, though?
No, but it's in our revenue, so it offsets the cost. We had a substantial increase in the, when we settled the collective agreement, which is probably in the vicinity of a half-million-dollar increase total across the workforce. And the rest of the increase would be associated to step increases and other increases and benefits.
Okay. So it's mostly, okay, it's mostly salaries?
90% of our budget is salaries and benefits.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Duran, I know you had your hand up, just to ask your question, sir.
Thank you. Under 434, Land, Police Academy, and Canadian Police College, what would that be for?
That would be for training.
Okay. And wage assistant funding, there's nothing in that line item. Is that the reason that there's nothing forward coming? Or why is that there with nothing in it?
Yeah, I'm not sure. That was added there a couple of years ago. I think it was added regarding some summer students. We had, we were getting provincial funding to offset the summer students, but we have nothing moving forward here.
Line 442 as well, I think that's just rental occurs, so, you know, why, why the budget, the 10,000 more this year? I'm just kind of curious.
Well, we had 13,000 budgeted the year before. We spent 4,000 last year. It really all depends on the operational needs, and normally that these rental vehicles are used for covert operations and depend on what operations are ongoing. We could potentially be using that or not.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ramsey?
Chief, could you explain inmate meals to some people that are just new to the system? Like, why do we pay for the meals, I guess? Yeah, those are costs that are associated to inmate lockups for, so that are not, that are just housed overnight or short-term for remands, so we pay those costs, reimburse the jail. It's been a fixed rate for a while. It's different than if someone's sentenced to provincial incarceration, then the province picks up. These are strictly for ones that we are housing for short-term.
Good. Counselor Bernard, got a question? Good? Okay, thank you, Chief. Hold on, hold on, just one sec, hold on.
Sorry, Chief, just on the operational expenses for JFO. Last year was 50, you're up about 100. I know you probably, you were over budget last year, about 93. What is JFO?
That's also probably a line item that needs updating, but basically that is, is expenses associated to, you know, drug enforcement, you know, the payment of expert witnesses or confidential informants, or those types of expenses.
Okay, so that's all based on, that's a fluid budget as well, based on what might be happening at the moment or at the day?
Yeah, that's correct. There's also, there's also, you know, certainly a lot of unpredictability in that area, depending on what the needs are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So Chief Engineer again, Public Works. Counselor McCabe, you want to, any opening questions, comments? You want to welcome the chief? Okay. Any questions? In Public Works, line 459. Counselor Bernard?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, vehicle maintenance and repair is line 478, quite a jump. And I thought we were getting a lot of new vehicles. Now, I know we spent over. And maybe it's not just vehicles, Scott, maybe it's heavy equipment, is it?
Your worship, through the counselor, so yes, it's, that'd be any of our half-tons, one-ton's, loaders, dump trucks, things like that. The challenge is, costs have gone up extremely high over the past number of years, even though, and the other issue is we do have four mechanic positions, but right now, three of them are vacant, or two of them are vacant. We have one on leave for an extended period of time, and it's been very, very hard to attract people to these positions, so we've had to outsource a lot of work just to ensure our fleet keeps operating, especially our winter fleet, and like I say, those costs have gone through the roof over the past couple of years, especially with COVID and the short supply of mechanics in the industry. The hourly rate's gone up across the board.
Thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
Two questions to Scott. Scott, urban beautification. You're looking to do roughly about 50,000 more there. Is there any particular work or expansion? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Line 471.
Oh, sorry, yeah, line 471.
Yes, thank you, your worship, through the counselor. A lot of that has to do with our fee, city next year's hosting the Communities in Bloom next fall. So there's a number of things that we're doing to prepare for that. There is a couple of contracts in terms of some event management and things like that, and so that's the additional. So it's a one-time fee, and the following year, you'll see that come back down to normal.
Level out, okay, perfectly. And my second question, 481, snow removal. Again, I would have to think that would be a bit unpredictable as well. I'm actually kind of surprised to see that the 23, 24th, at this point in time, I don't know when this is forecasted, maybe the end of February, that you're at 3.8. I know we had some snow, we didn't have a big season. So you're going a little bit higher to 4, to 4 million. How do you adjust for that when, if we have a really bad year, like, is that just something that we... I mean, we got to keep on moving and...
Your worship, through the...
Take out for what you didn't spend somewhere else and rob Peter to pay ball, basically?
Your worship, through to the counselor, so good, good question. So where we come up with that number is a couple of things. A, we have our contractors, so we have three different contracts with two contractors that do approximately, I think it's around 155 kilometers of city roads. Our city crews do about 90 to 95. So they're in those, each of those contracts, because they're long-term contracts, there is a CPI clause increase year-over-year, so that's part of our increase. The other increase in that is, again, we know that salt prices go up year-over-year, trucking rates go up year-over-year. So we've been fairly fortunate. We have some pretty good numbers over the past few years, and we can handle a typical winter. If we got another 2015 year, I'm not sure. It depends on how bad it is. Again, we're quite confident with a typical winter. This is a budget that we'll see. Our real big cost, though, is salt for our own crews, and that's the big unknown. If you get a little winter, like, I think last year, there was a lot of free slaw happening, and so we were out, I remember one month, practically almost every night salting, where this year it hasn't been as bad, so that's been helpful. So it can be predictable from year to year, but it seems to work, average out and work out in the end each year so far since, over the past number of years.
So these contracts are, they're paying by, by snow removal versus a fixed rate? It's not a fixed rate. It's obviously time materials based on the snow, or is there a combination of both of that?
That's a good question. So the city pays for the salt, because salt, that was one thing that, when these contracts were negotiated back in the day, that's a huge unknown, and some winters could be very low, and some winters could be very high. And so, of course, the contractor's going to put a lot of buffer and insurance in their contract to cover that. And so that was a way to bring down those prices, that we take on that risk. But how we pay the contractors, they're responsible for clearing the road from curb to curb or asphalt to asphalt, and getting, there's a number of conditions, barefoot width must be done within 12 hours on a major road, 24 hours on our residential roads, and we pay them by the kilometer. So every, each contract has a different kilometer rate, and the different rates vary. And the reason why they vary is there's so many, in some contracts, there'd be more priority routes than there are residential routes, and because of that higher standard, you know, a shorter time to clear that road, there's a more, there's a bigger cost with that, so... But it is a set-flat rate up to 300 centimeters per snow, or up to 300 centimeters of snow per year. And we've been under that for the past few years.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. I think, I always thought that the high expense cost was whenever we have a lot of snow and it's hauling out of the downtown. That's where the big bulk was. Most of these contracts are pretty stable unless you're over the 300 centimeters.
Your worship, through the chair, yeah, that is another big cost. That's probably, I don't remember the breakdown, but I think it was around 3 or 350,000 we include in that one, but our salt budget is higher than that just because it's, it's, we use a lot of it, just because of our climate here in Charlestown.
And Scott, has the cost increased of snow removal because we have our snow dump out on the Union Road? Does that factor into it?
So we had to factor in a couple of years ago, when we started hauling out there, that we would likely need a few more trucks each night just to ensure there was a steady stream of trucks at our snow blowers downtown, so that was factored into it a couple of years ago.
Okay, municipal buildings? Counselor McCabe, did you have a question? No? Okay. Here's my favorite one. Counselor Duran, your manager's coming up, Water and Sewer, Water and Wastewater.
Yes, this will be good.
Do you want to introduce it? He said hello there, Richard. Just one second. Counselor Bernard?
Just one more question on the municipal buildings. I'm just wondering why the property taxes will go down. 633, I guess we paid 420, or it's 440, so 440 is a more accurate number. Is that why we're down from the 633?
So are they, Dan, are they provincial or municipal? Municipal buildings?
Those would be municipal buildings that we pay property taxes.
Municipal and provincial?
No, we wouldn't pay tax on provincial buildings. We would only pay tax on buildings that we own.
Okay, but, but when they tax us, right, they tax our buildings, do they not?
Yes.
And they keep so much, or do they, is it a commercial tax, or is it not, non-commercial?
We only get our tax credit on non-commercial assessments, so if it's a commercial building or an industrial building, those would not be assessed as non-commercial. So we wouldn't get a tax credit back on those.
Counselor Bernard, what is your question about the... Go ahead.
I did ask it. I just wondered why it was budgeted 630 and it's down to 440, but it looks like last year it was just 420 paid out, so I think, sounds like they're trying to just get it more, more accurate.
Scott, line 503.
Manager Scott has just advised that that was based on the assessment that Finance had done. Stephen Burke had analyzed the tax bills and come up with the 440 as a reasonable estimate for the year coming.
Okay. Okay, Mr. McCune, how are you, Mr. McCune? Good to see you here this evening, sir.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, revenue, expenses, and... He's got... Okay. Any questions, Counselor Bernard?
Thank you. Just wondering, one was extraordinary expenses. I'm wondering why, we had budgeted 50,000 last year, and we're up to 200,000 this year. I wonder why that can't stay at 50,000?
What line is that?
That is 554.
554. Can you see it there, Counselor? Mr. McCune?
There are items that we anticipate may come forward this year, and in an open forum, we wouldn't disclose those matters.
Sorry, Richard, what was that?
It relates to negotiation expenses that can change from year to year or ongoing negotiations.
So do you feel you need it that much?
Yes.
Of course you do. Okay, let's try another one. Equipment repairs and rentals. We spent 817,000 last year, and you're up to 1.2 and 1/2, so $440,000 increase.
So there's some of that, in the past, we've seen those expenses, and there's some expenses, we weren't able to get some of that work done this year, so we anticipate getting it done in the future here. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, Richard, just going under line 517, public fire protection. That was put in back in, what, I think you were here, Craig, Craig Walker might have been here, but... What's, how do you determine that rate?
It was put in in the 1960s, your worship.
Yeah.
So I wasn't, wasn't quite here, not even quite on the planet.
517, and it's always been 1.3 million since 1960?
No, 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 it increases each year with inflation, but that is, that's the recognition of... The first reason why we have water supply in the city is actually for firefighting.
Yeah.
And our system is all sized based on firefighting. The amount of water that you need to flow during a fire is greater than what we have for our customer demands. There's also the fire hydrants that we look after, snow removal for the fire hydrants, and all their maintenance each year.
Yeah, it's just that I remember back earlier in 2000 that it took a big jump. Do you remember that, Richard?
I wasn't here for that, but it could have come out during a rate study. So our rate study looks at how we should charge the various customers and making sure that our expenses relate back to our revenues.
Yeah. I think that's, anyways, that's something that has to be reviewed. And then there's, where is the rent on the building? Your new building? You pay a cost for the rental or the, for the building, where is that, Richard? I had it in my other... Yeah. I think in last year's budget, it was tab 20... Anyways, while I'm looking at that, Counselor Duran, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did.
Go ahead, sir, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, we did a lot of these budgets at the committee level, great discussions. You know, the manager's keeping his numbers down quite a bit.
Yeah.
The concern with me that there was different numbers at the budget, there was like a surplus of... The concern with me that there was different numbers at the budget, uh there was like a surplus of 400. Then then we've seen some numbers a little over a million. Um, I'm just looking at, I know a few years ago, we said we were going to go with CPI uh for increases so we can keep up with salaries, things like that, costs of fuel. Um, I'm I'm just concerned if if we have a surplus right now, uh is it prudent for us to to increase the fees? Or or is it something that we we could hold or, you know, not go as high as as we recommend it? You know, I know I know city residents are stressed and strained with all the different bills and things and cost of living and fuel. I'm just wondering, is is the rate increase something we could hold on? Is that up for discussion?
Yes, that's on the floor. And I I think, Mr. Chair, did, when we looked at the budget, uh the revenue of 15,621,000, that included the 3% increase, correct, Richard?
That is correct, so we have included the 3% increase in these revenue projections.
Yeah. Counsel Counsel Duran, do you want to follow up?
Yeah, it just, like I said, it it just, it was something that we were looking at. We we went through the budgets and and the committee was very good. We we just went along with the 3% um recommendation. You know, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we could if we could step that back or or hold it this year. You know, I I never discussed it with council yet. I was waiting to, you know, come forward tonight in case there was any other expectations or, you know, I I just, you know, I just kinda would would like to see if we could hold it for for now.
Okay.
Uh, any any discussion on on council's thought process now on that?
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. Um, and I know, um, you know, I remember, was it four years ago when we had to raise our water rates by, I think it was, I don't know how much, but it was it was
40% plus.
A big chunk where we committed to doing the the 3% or whatever moving forward so not to ever have to go back down a road where um where it was that much of a jump. And you know, I I know that um that's not a service we want to not have the finances for. 3% would be a difference of what, Betty? What would you be looking at 3% increase? Uh, Richard, you probably have the number, of course you have the number, Richard. What's the number to the answer? What's the answer that yearly? What would pair, what would people notice in a bill or monthly or?
Yep, so our average customer would see an increase of about $20 for the year or 5 cents per day.
Oh, I think I think that if we're going to do what we said and stay to our commitment, 5 cents a day is well worth it.
Yeah. I think Counsel McCabe, I was at the the meeting, so was Counsel McCabe and I believe Counsel Ramsey, and we were talking about what surplus was last year, what's surplus for this year. Surplus under the audited statements is about 800,000. This year's forecasted surplus, I think, Richard, is about 1.4 million. So I think what Counsel Duran is saying that if if we're putting in, the 3% was there, if it was, you know, just floating in between zero and and a negative. So you got a surplus last year, surplus this year. I think that's why he was saying with with ratepayers, it may not be a lot to you, but it may be a lot to someone else. That's what he's, Counsel McCabe.
So what is a lot to to ratepayers is when they find out after three months that they had a leak and they have a bill for $1,300. So I'd like to see us operationally tighten up how we educate or let people know what's going on and maybe invest in some of that. I know it's going to cost money, but personally, I'd rather see us do some of that versus um so that people aren't getting bills for 13 and $1,400 a month.
You can do that with your surplus too.
Yeah, okay.
Counsel Duran? Did you wait?
Yeah, I I understand, I understand the concerns uh with this, but we, you know, the managers were doing a great job in in his benefit and he has, you know, come in with some surplus budgets. Um, you know, we get stressed out and and upset when it comes time to raising the rates at the water, but we don't blink when we hold the rates on on our own budgets. We don't put the taxes up on our own. So, you know, it's it's a catch 22, you know. I I find it's a hard time. The manager's doing a good job uh with his budgeting and and managing. You know, maybe this is a one-off due to the amount of surplus budget we have is to not increase it at this time. Um, that's that's my thought. I'm I'm not for an increase due to the fact that, you know, the the budgets or or the surplus that we have is substantial. And, you know, if there was a a time that, you know, next year, we're we're looking very closely at this. The last time that the budget went up, I think, um, rate increased 22%. We haven't done it for years and years. We weren't watching it, we were holding the line. Now we're we're watching this very closely. Um, so, you know, i- if we have a surplus this year and and we hold the rate, then next year, you know, if if we think that there's there's other things that have to be done coming down the line, the surplus wasn't as great as it was this last year or two, then we can put the rate up a, you know, a 3%. This is kind of a one one-time-off thing that, you know, we're we're looking okay at at water and sewer and and, you know, it's it's my wish to hold the line.
Okay, any, thank you, Counsel Duran, just putting it on the floor, any more thoughts? Counsel Bernard?
I guess if there's surplus and it's a, you know, significant surplus and I guess the public will be asking why we're increasing their water rates if there's a surplus there, so.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. Um, yeah, I guess that's to the point, I mean, that's certainly logical, but we did talk about, you know, that staying ahead and staying in the curve here with the 3%. I would, you know, if we if we don't go this year, I'm all right with that as well. But I mean, next year, is it going to be four or five or three? You know, I don't know if we'll get ourselves too far ahead or too far behind, that's walking a fine line here. Uh, but we do have a, you know, a surplus, I would be fine with not increasing it, but at the same time, I'll be very mindful of what that might include next year if we go, have to go 4% or 5% or something. Yeah, it's a little bit of a dance, I guess, is what I would call this.
Dipping in.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, I would just be concerned if we if we don't continue with the commitment we made of this 3%, $20 a year, I believe it was, to the rate pairs, that um I know that, listening to the water and sewer meetings over the last couple of years, there's a lot of aging infrastructure and there's a lot of um unknowns when it comes to water and and wastewater. So, I mean, at the end of the day, I'll support what, you know, the majority of council wants, but I would think that, you know, I would I would say keep it as is.
Counsel Norman Beck?
I think what we're finding is catching up is not fun and playing catch-up isn't fun on projects aging. And we do have a lot of aging structures and I'd rather, much prefer go this pound uh ounce of prevention. Is it, so prevention's worth a pound of cure sort of thing. So I'm, for the amount it costs on an annual basis, I'd rather keep, again, keep our award-winning water drinkable and award-winning and uh prevent major stuff from happening in the future. So I think we stay the course.
McCabe?
Thank you. And if we are going to change, we have to probably amend the resolution that we passed four years ago or three years ago, which did state that we were going to move with the uh the index, so.
Policy.
No, I think we passed a resolution.
I think it was policy, but anyway.
Either way, we should check into that because that would be following the proper process and procedures. But I think we did pass a resolution, which would mean that we would have to amend that resolution.
Counsel Bernard?
Just wondering, uh, Richard, the sludge handling fees, um, has that gone up at all in the last few years? And is there room for that to go up?
We adjust that along with our percentage increase each year. So whatever we put for residents of Charla, our customers in Charlatown, we increase that rate at the same percentage.
Okay, so it it's comparable to other places providing the same service?
There's only Charlatown and Summerside on PEI that provide that service.
Kind of along where they are?
And we determine that rate the same way we we determine our other rates. We look at what it costs and then that's what we charge back. So the province actually put, paid for that facility to be implemented at our plant. We did a rate study to determine how much it costs us to process that material, looking at our operation costs, and then we charged the customers back the cost for providing that service.
Counsel McLeer?
Just just in general, um, I'm I'm in agreement, support of staying the status quo on the weight, on the on the rate piece. Um, with not knowing um what's ahead in terms of wellhead protection opportunities, lead pipe in the ground, um, emergencies and and freezes in the in the capital needs potentially of of soaring water. I'm I'm comfortable with status quo personally, thank you.
Betty, Betty, can you put that slide back up on the CCBF? I think water and wastewater for this year has taken about, what, 3 million from that? So I'm just, every year, it's 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 a good amount, a good chunk that the uh that comes out of the utility, which is definitely needed, but, you know, when you get surpluses, maybe we can start pushing that towards getting. Good, want to go? Yeah, that's, I'm just bringing it up, that's why it's up there.
Sure, so when I see the surplus, I go back and look and find out where it occurred. And it occurred for us in our wages because we have outstanding positions that we're trying to recruit and hope that we are able to recruit those positions this year. So I'm very hopeful that we will fill the positions that we need to complete this very important work. It also means that sometimes when we don't have all those people, we're not getting all the work done that we should. And then also, it's the capital financing, there are projects that we are going to see the impacts in that coming budget. If you look at where we didn't reach what we budgeted, it's on our interest payments and our depreciation. That relates to our capital projects. So all those projects are going to come through in this future year. So while you see uh that we had a surplus last year, I'm not budgeting for a surplus in this year. We didn't budget last year, but we utilized a surplus because we weren't able to recruit the people we need to do the work that we need to do. And we didn't get all the capital projects done, so we didn't see those interest and depreciation increases in the budget. And again, council, I think this year, our the presentation, and I was thrilled to see that after many years of trying to explain our infrastructure deficit to you, I really felt that you understood and you heard it this year. There's a lot of work that we need to do going into the future. I'd be very cautious of not getting our customers into that level of seeing that we do have an increase each year and we should be increasing our rates every year. And stats that I shared with the committee was that right now, 75% of our customers, our our regular, our residential customers are actually paying less for water than they did when we, they were flat-rate customers. So I mean, as much as we're increasing a little bit, people are conserving water, they're using less because we are metered now. And 75% of our customers are paying less than they did for water back when they were flat-rate customers, when we adjusted for inflation. And our water rates, Charlatown compared to all the other comparators that we do in the region, we are at the bottom, especially on water. There was a comment that my water is very expensive. We're actually the cheapest, cheapest water, our wastewater, we have a we have a very good wastewater treatment plant, but it was, it costs a lot of money to run it and operate it. So our wastewater expenses are a little bit higher. But if I, in the committee, when I showed that table, we are at the bottom of the list of what utilities are putting into their infrastructure and providing those services. It's very important for us to keep that in mind, that we we are providing the service at very competitive rates. And I, this part of this year, now that you've heard about our infrastructure deficit, we'll be doing planning to let you know how we're going to address that need into the future. And it's going to take money. There was a question to me, how do we speed up some of the lead pipe replacements or taking care of our aging infrastructure? There's only one way and it's with money.
Okay, Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Richard. Lot of good information. Just wondering, Richard, that the 3% increase, what 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 will that net for the city? What do you expect?
It's about 360,000.
Okay, okay. Doing a good job, Richard.
Counsel Duran?
Thank you, thank you for the clarification, Richard, but we're not the lowest uh water in in, you know, the the Maritimes or on the island. We're we're low, we're one of the lowest ones, but we're not the lowest. Um, we know that infrastructure needs to be done. Council has uh said that, you know, this is a priority for us. Um, you know, to just to put some money aside, um, you know, in case of emergency, you know, we we always can come back and and get some, just like in our operational budget. I mean, we can't be fear mongering that, you know, if something happened, we have no money. We we have the ability to get money to to cover emergencies. So, you know, I I I sit here and I I say, okay, I I see council doesn't want to hold the rate, but that's okay, I I understand that. But, you know, due to the fact that we do have a surplus, um, you know, I said it's a one-off, hold the rate, give the give the city taxpayer a break for a year. Uh, but, you know, I I can only recommend or ask, but I can see that that's not going forward, so thanks anyway.
Okay. And Richard, when I'm looking under your tab 235, repairs and maintenance of buildings, your facility rental is 200, 205? You're into a new building now, is that the same, did you budget the same?
We did budget the same. I was asked by the the person who looks after that division, and I suggested that we keep the that number the same. We are moving into the same floor area space. I mean, the new building was constructed simply to match what the utility has.
You don't have more square footage in the new building?
No, it was matched to what our current requirement is.
A new building?
In the new building, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions? John, do you have a question? Big time?
Your honor, your worship, I I did just want to pass on a comment that one of the department managers had had relayed to me here. And just in terms of the increases, there was a discussion amongst the managers to try to keep to, you know, somewhere close to the CPI increase was, which was about 3% to avoid surprises, you know, year over year. Uh, people like to, you know, have some predictability in terms of their expenses and and as opposed to, you know, foregoing for a year or two and then having to go to a 9 or 12% jump, that this was more manageable for 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 residents and and user fees. So Parks and Recreation, for example, tried to stay to the 3%, so I just wanted to pass that information on.
So just before we move to new initiatives, you know, I know we cut back on legal and it was another area under equipment. We did have a request from the, I don't, I think it follows under grants. It was from the Kiwanis Dairy Bar renovations. I don't know, did did you incorporate that, Dan, in over a five-year plan we were looking at? I thought we looked at it as possibility. Yeah, it's not there.
Yes, I do not believe that there was anything budgeted in the in the in the coming fiscal year, so.
Okay, can we agree to, like, we do, we did say that we would look at a five-year agreement, 50,000, 10,000 a year for Kiwanis? Are we planning to go with that or?
I would like to.
I, what's that, Counselor?
I would like to.
Yeah.
If we're going to go on both things.
Yeah. Yes, Betty?
Um, thank you, your worship. I was under the understanding that we would be bringing the grants back to a separate meeting, like to the finance and then to council after that, similar to what we did last year, where we would have a list of all the the community grants that come out of the finance budget, all the all the requests.
So you don't want to put it in here, you want to wait?
It 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 will be included at that time and we can make a decision then. Does it work okay?
Counsel Duran, you're all right with that?
I I don't know why, like, is that going under that section or can we ask for it here?
Yeah, it would go under that section under grants where we discuss them at finance and then forward them to council. So the monies, the money would be there if we look at five years at 10,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
It just slows down the process. It's down to 400. Yeah, okay. Oh, God, yes, geez, that's your job to tell us. Yeah, no, you weren't. Yeah, no, you weren't. Okay, we need a motion, we need a motion to extend the meeting. It shouldn't be too long. Moves by Counsel Beck, second by Counsel McCabe. All those in favor? Counsel Dran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. So we're done. Now we have to go back to new initiatives and that. If you took that 50 plus the 24, legal and then equipment, deduct that from... Okay. Just one second.
We're at, we're at 245. Sorry, yeah. 4,870 deficit, so we started at 278 at the beginning of the day. We dropped solicitors' fees by 50 grand, equipment by 24. Took out the $200,000 grant to Confederation Center of the Arx.
But, but taking that grant out, okay? Now, just one second, we're using 100,000 to look at the loan for the million, and we're using 100, another 100 for the sidewalks. But again, I, I thought we, we're going to balance that through this no purchase or no doing, limiting what we're going to do at the East Link, which was a million dollars less. That's, that's, that's why when you say 100, 100, I'm just saying, wait now, no, we, we took a hun, a million out, put a million back. It still stays the same. It still stays below your 55 million. No, the roads is under 1.1 out of CCBF.
Yeah, I think, I think we ended up back at 55 and a half million on the capital side. Once we're all was said and done. So there's, once, you know, broad brush strokes were roughly where we were. So we didn't make any further adjustment for interest and depreciation.
Okay, so let's say we don't go with the, the deal with the, with the Confederation Center. Yep. The 200,000, it's only 100,000. That's, that's what happens here. So we made a commitment last year, 200, 200, 200. So how do we recoup that? You, you have to put that in here, the 100.
We, you know, we put a million in capital.
Right, but if that's, if it does, if it doesn't go through with the, the center, then we're back to just doing the 200, 200, 200.
Possibly, yeah.
Yeah. So you're able to compensate for that? We will be able to?
Well, I think that the direction was to, to provide for the capital amount.
I know.
And, and then the, the 200,000 would, would be removed from the grant. And, and then you're going to adjust interest and depreciation. But in, in the end, when we did our, our backs and forth on the, on the capital budget, we didn't end up saving a whole lot. I think we started at 50, 54, 55. So we're, you know, we're, we're within a...
You say 74,000 in the operation, what we just went through here?
Yes, so that brings the operational side down to just, you know, just a small number.
Plus, plus the 200,000 that we're going to take off for capital for the sidewalks and for the...
I guess that's where I'm not clear, is the 200 for, that we're taking off for sidewalks and... Well, okay, let's just...
What, what we did there was, was when Eleanor mentioned about the 200,000, that was going to Confederation Center, and you're enveloping that into your million dollar capital. And I think you talked about that, like doing like, buying the asset, having it as a capital expenditure. So that 200,000, there was two more million put on capital. A million for sidewalks and a million for, what was the other?
Confederation Center.
Fed Center, yeah. So that's where that 200,000 he's talking about would go to pay for that.
That's...
So it's not, it's not extra money. There's that 200,000 we were putting towards Confederation Center is now being put towards paying for the 2 million dollar extra capital. That's right. You follow that, Dan?
No, sorry, no.
2 million dollars goes into capital, 200,000 that was in the operational budget pays for it.
Yes, but we, we're, we're in and out on the capital, right? We're, we haven't, we haven't reduced our capital budget significantly. We, we added...
No, we increased it.
Right.
We increased it.
So...
We increased it, a million dollars for sidewalks and a million dollars for Confederation Center.
Right. Yeah, just, hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
Okay, so the fir, the first draft was 55,707,000. That was in the first draft. Then we took it down in the second draft, it was 54,535,000.
Right.
54,535,000. Now we're back up to, we're still below draft one. It's 50, 55,375,000.
Where'd you take the million out?
What's that?
East Link.
Took a million out of East Link?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where it came from.
Okay.
So we, we didn't really, I think you're, you're 55. Well, no, but, but my, my concern is, is that if this doesn't go through the Confederation Center, then how do we go back to that 200,000? Operate, that we agreed to. Counsel McLeer.
Because if it doesn't go through, we do what we said here a whole bunch of other times. We'll just find the money somewhere. It's what we kept saying, other things. I heard that at least five times since we've been doing this budget thing. When we were trying to take things away, we, we could, all I heard was we can come back and ask for more. So we'll come back and ask for more.
So there's an appetite for that?
I, well, I don't know.
Counsel Dran. Counsel Bernard. Go.
Okay. So if I got this right, it's showing 4,800 surplus. Is that, is that correct, Dan? 4,800?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. In the budget, like I said earlier, which we don't do, but in this one, they added 2,530,000 for new initiatives. So you're actually up 2,560,000 right now. You have to decide what you want for new initiatives, you want any. You have, so that's what you are, and you got a million dollars in extraordinary, which is nice to have some extra money in extraordinary expenses. So, you know, so right now, I see, to me, you're at basically 2,600,000. That's our budget. Go to new initiatives and see what the lack that want to do, if they want to do any.
But I think right now it's stating that with the new initiatives included, we can afford everything that's in there right now. If we just walked away right now, that would be, we're at a...
Yeah, yeah, just one sec, just one sec.
Oh, I don't know what we'd debate in initiatives other than to have more of a surplus.
Wow.
No, I mean, we're not there yet. I mean, there might be things to debate.
Yeah, 4,000 surplus.
Yeah, just one sec, just one second, hold on, just...
You know what? Yeah, I, I, we've never spent 2 million dollars on new initiatives to pass. If you want to go and blow it off, fill your roots, but I won't be supporting it. I mean, we don't know what next year's going to look like. We had a lot of hiring that we done this year. We got a lot more that's coming next year. So I think you go through it and have counsel decide what they feel is, is priority.
Okay. Counsel Beck.
I think what happened with the 2 million dollars and the 200,000 is as we were reducing our capital, we decided to add on a million for Confederation Center, a million for streets.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, active transportation, multi-use pathways, whatever we have. And so we, we never, it's all this money that's floating in the air and, and, but we, we just took off the 200,000 that would, would ultimately get added on because a million dollars of capital means 100,000 in depreciation and interest, right? So that's kind of where the, you know, some of this number is not actually, it will be kind of flushed out and figured out in a little bit later time. So I think that's kind of where maybe a bit of the confusion came from as well, too.
Okay. Let's go to the new initiatives, which is under NI summary.
Your worship.
Go ahead there.
If I could just share some information. So last year, 23, 24, you had 3.4 million in new initiatives. Finance committee recommended 2 million of those, and council approved 1.9 million in new initiatives. Surplus from last year, Betty.
Okay. Yeah, this year it's a million. Just go down, hold on, sorry, sir. Go. It's 2.5 to 1 million.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's, and, and there's no savings in our CCBF anymore. Like, to me, I'm just a little nervous that we're spending everything we have. And I'd like, you know, it's always nice to have a little bit for a rainy day. So I... Pardon me? Anyway. So, yeah, so it's going through, I'm surprised we spent that much.
NI summary, which is, first one, city administration, director of community services, city solicitors, city clerk, policy analyst. Second, communication officer permanent, new website, etc. Okay. Can I just go with Counsel McCabe and go back to you? Counsel McCabe.
Okay, I'm just trying to follow this and now I'm trying to follow here. How many communication people? One or two? One, one shared? Okay. And where's my total here? The total is 2,550,000 and that gets you everything that we want, already went through and kind of processed. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what our, our CAO feels is necessary or essential for the city to run the way that she would like to move this. The one employee we have is asking for this. Is that correct? Okay.
What, what position are you talking about? Director? All of them?
All of them.
And you're saying you're supporting them all?
So then have a 4,800 surplus?
Hold on, go ahead.
That, what did you say, Counsel Bernard?
And then have a 4,000 surplus for the city, that be it? That's all you got left?
But there's, there's means if you get into a situ, because what we've done is budgeted within a realistic view of what we're going to use, right? And if you don't overspend that, does that include his worship's passion for support? That's, none of our grants are anything in, or in that then yet, right? Or is that part of our grants?
Grants are in this budget.
Oh, my gosh, there's so much money in my eyeballs. Okay, so grants are in here, so we're going to be able to look at that too and everything and still have a projected 4,000 budget. So that's really a realistic where you think you're going to spend. Why, why'd you look like that?
I was looking up at the ceiling.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel McLeer.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Just historically, I guess, is a question I would have. I mean, you know, I thought the objective here was to run a, you know, a balanced budget. I know that's certainly a word, but in fact, is that the expectation on paper? Is that, you know, 4,000 surplus is essentially a balanced budget? There's, there seems to be some concern here as to how much we should be projecting for a surplus of what? Is that 100,000, 200,000, 300,000? I don't know. It's fully, I mean, I'd be in support of a lot of these initiatives for sure. I mean, the CAO has put a lot of work and effort into identifying these needs with the departments and the managers and put together a very strong matrix to support a lot of these positions. So I think we'd be in a different conversation if we were 400,000 in a deficit asking for 2 some million. I guess I'm, I'm not really sure, and I don't know. So is it proper for us to carry, I don't know who would answer that question, but proper for us to carry a projected surplus?
So could, could I just go back, and I think I talked to Counsel Beck about this. If you go back to our November, sorry, March 11th meeting, March 4th, where we got the breakdown of, and this came from our meeting at the, on the 24th and the 25th, with the three directors, integrated growth, community services, finance and corporate services. So under integrated growth, corporate real estate, new. Economic growth and attraction, engineering, infrastructure and project management, new. Planning and heritage, tourism and events. This is on page, if you're going, if you go to it, it's page 138 under the November, March 4th special meeting. Community services, bylaw enforcement, new. Environment and sustainability, parks and recreation, public works, water and sewer utility. Finance and corporate services, asset management, communications, finance, governance, legal and legislative services, which I think is new. Human resources and information technology services. Then it has in a box, new, these are future departments where positions need to be approved and funded by council. They may, they may be stood up in the 20, 24 or future years. So if we pass all these, like city clerk, where would city clerk go under those three? No, it's, it's there? City clerk? Okay, city solicitor, direct, okay, so director of community service. We do have new positions. So do they come back? I'm just trying to get a clarification. Do we vote on them or is that because it's in the, it's in the corporate or it's in the org chart? Do they stay as is? That's what I'm trying to get a clarification on.
The, the director of community services is not an approved position, so that would be part of this.
But if it's approved tonight?
If it's approved tonight, then that would approve the position and, and move forward with budget allocation for that position to be filled.
So bylaw enforcement office, or bylaw enforcement, new, that has to come back to council to... It doesn't? Okay, now hold on, just let me figure, just one second. Corporate real estate, new, does that come back to council?
Your worship, this is how people will be organized. These aren't positions per se. So if you look at the matrix that went forward for the draft corporate plan in the same meeting, the big long matrix, the 20 pager, it shows what future positions could be. At this point, we're working with what we have. So I'm not asking for a new manager of engineering, infrastructure and project management or a manager of corporate real estate that's further down the road. It's to delineate what the high-level functions are under each area. So integrated growth, a key aspect of what they'll be working on is corporate real estate. Until we have the people to do that job, the director will be carrying most of that work. And then the director of integrated growth will be working with public works as it stands right now in terms of their engineering and infrastructure projects and project management. Those functions will fall underneath them. So every year from here on out, if you recall at the very beginning of this process, that budget workshop where this matrix was first shown, this org chart was first shown, there was also a matrix in there that showed positions over the next five years. And it rated them between green, yellow and red, red being the most important that needed to be filled. All these positions that were put forward in terms of new initiatives were all falling in the red category. And the red category is the category of where we're not meeting our basic services for each of these different departments. And when you go into the corporate plan matrix, you just start to see areas where we're lacking. We're behind on over 25 bylaws. We're out of date on over 25 bylaws that need attention. We have numerous policies that need updating, and we just don't have the capacity to do it. And we see this playing out, we've seen it play out with the procedural bylaw. We couldn't get that up to date. The other things that were pointed out in the BDO, the matrix we have including, which just came up today, travel expenses from employees and council, that work still needs to be done outside of the BDO matrix. So really what this plan that has been put forward before you, I would argue they're not nice to haves. At this point, there has to haves for the services to continue in this municipality. Every year, we're going to have to build up our staff to match the service level as this municipality grows. And we're growing very quickly, and we can't continue to maintain the service levels that we did when we were 20,000 or 10,000. And I think we were about 20,000 when you amalgamated, and you had three directors at that time. But at this point, what seems to be the expectation for me is the CAO is to run a city of 40,000 and produce over 25 new bylaws and policies because I'm missing that whole strategic level of folks. So what we're trying to do here is build out the strategic piece which we need, but then also the boots on the ground that we need across this organization. And Dan, if you scroll down to the bottom of our sheet here, you'll see based on the position... positions that we need, what the ask was initially from the team this year was 4.7 million and we reduced that down to 2, 2 million. And we started out with 38 positions and we got it down to 20. We need all those positions. So whether they come this year or we come back next year, we need them all. And there's been a couple of comments thrown around that I'm not touching base with staff or out of touch with managers. I can tell you, people are stressed out. They're working more than they should. And these are steps to help to try and resolve that and take a little bit of weight off the staff that they've been carrying. So that's why it's this high and you're going to find in years to come, we have to build up our staff.
Okay, thank you kindly there, CAO Mohammed. Counsel Ramsey, Counsel Beck, Matart Bernard. Counsel Ramsey.
No, I just found out there when I asked the CAO, like the last meeting with the city clerk and all that stuff, and I see that's not on the list. I, I, I'm just wondering what, like I was reading the matrix and everything and all that too. Eleanor and, you know, everything seems to be following in place, but I'm just wondering when you had the city clerk down there and all that, but that's not there now. So thank you.
Okay, Counsel Beck.
Yeah, thank you for that, Eleanor. I just have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Who would be overseeing, if you're saying we need the procedural and policy updates, who would be overseeing that?
Thank you, Counselor Beck. So it's going to be a real balance of the directors and in me, working with the managers. The managers just don't have the time to pick up policy work with their, they're too busy organizing boots on the ground and the real operational aspects of it. Depending on what some of the policies and bylaws are, some of it may require us, require us to get some specialist consulting. Code of Conduct would be the legal team that I used earlier today. But to keep our legal costs down, the best thing we can do as directors and managers and CAO is to try and draft the bylaws and policies the best we can. Then we send them to the experts to look over.
Okay.
Or the consultants, I'd say, rather than experts.
Yeah, I just have a couple others. So currently, I would see economic growth, tourism and events as one, a department, entity, portfolio, whatever. And, but here it's split under two. And we have a, I mean, it would probably be under all of our departments, it would be one of our smaller ones. And we're breaking that down into two, two separate reports. What's, I guess what's the need for that or why, why would it be broken down under two, for such a small department to be broken down and be considered as two reports to the director of integrated growth?
So in different municipalities, you'll actually find tourism and events under community services. There was a real, in economic growth and attraction under integrated growth is usually where you'd find those groups. There was a push by the team to stay closer together, which is fine. So they're both reporting under integrated growth. Within that area, there is someone who is at supervisor level and then there's someone at a manager level. And they're both reporting directly to the director of integrated growth. If you want to think of it, one is like the group that recruits and does the business attraction to attract events to Charlestown. The other group is the group that's implementing the events in Charlestown. So arguably, one of them could be more, said to be more of a community services where, where you find the tourism and events. And then economic growth has a different function of the business development piece. Ultimately, in the end, they will still come to the same committee and report to the same director.
Okay.
Yeah. And just, just a footnote, when Ron Atkins was here, his job was economic development. That's what he focused on. Other questions?
Yeah, just one more. So if we're looking to, if the need is identifiable, the need is there to meet services, challenges, demands, whatever we have in the city, how will we know? What are the benchmarks going to be for success in terms of if we are to go down this road? What do, how will we know whether we're making an impact through these, through having the extra, the extra position of community services?
Through to Counselor Beck. So ultimately, what we've been missing here is the piece of how we measure the success of council's strategic plan. And that strategic plan interlocks with the corporate plan. And under there, by having those two different reports or plans speaking to each other, you have your key performance indicators and what you're delivering. So even at this point with a new CAO, it's hard to say what my goals or deliverables are when we haven't specified that in detail in terms of the strategic plan, what the goals are, so I can look to achieve those. And the purpose of the corporate plan is to show how, as a corporation, we achieve those. And then you'll be able to measure from that what we can actually achieve. But as it stands right now, I don't, I don't have the time to put forward all the strategic stuff I need to put forward and that's where the struggle is.
Counsel, can we come back to? We'll come back. Okay, pressure button, pressure button.
We, we used to have a strategic initiative officer position that was a contract position. Will that be put back in place as a, because I think there was talk about that, converting that from a contract to a permanent position? Is that position going to be, is that position accounted for in here? I can't remember, sorry, or is it in our budgeted?
Thought that was done last year. Yeah.
That's correct. It was approved position last year.
Yeah, I know, but, but it was, I don't think we, so we approved it as a permanent position last year? Just didn't fill up. Okay, thank you.
She's on maternity leave, I think.
Yeah.
Counsel Matart.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to, I guess, point out, you know, just from the HR chair perspective, you know, and having lots of discussions around some of the new initiatives, certainly from a staffing perspective. You know, I know myself personally, just being here a little over a year, I can certainly have a huge appreciation for all the work that the managers do here in the run of the day. This is a, this is a huge corporation. There's a lot of things that occur. And like any other organization, you know, there are staffing constraints and I think it's important to ensure that, you know, we continue with staff complements to match what we need to deliver services and the administration of the city across Charlestown. You know, so I know this looks like a large ask, there's 20, I think, initiatives, I'm not sure if they're all, it's 20 of them are FTEs, I believe, so there's roughly 20 full time equivalents. You know, and the, and the CAO and her staff put together a very comprehensive matrix of the why. It's, I call that the business case. They presented a business case to council. I believe it's her responsibility to look at it from a fiscal perspective. I'm not sure we determine what the corporation needs and doesn't need from a, to positions, whether it's saying, well, we only need one director to run the city. I guess, how would we know that? You know, I think the CAO has been here for just a little over a year or going on a year. She has clearly put a lot of time and effort into determining the best course of action for the city from an administration standpoint. And I'm, I support that. I support it based on the fact that it's even coming in under budget in the sense of the overall budget. If we were not there, we may have to have a different conversation and look to see where we would have to go from there. So I, I, I think, you know, like the due diligence was done, a case has been presented and council has all received that. So please bear in mind that this isn't just a wake up wish list, this is something that is needed to run the city effectively, all of these positions. And next year, we're going to be doing the same thing because we're growing and expanding and we need to have that. And it's not just the administrative level here, it's the boots on the ground as the CAO said, you know, we're, we're doing new construction and building everywhere and I'm sure Mr. Adams over there was saying, I'd love to have more people to help do sidewalks and such, so thank you.
But Counsel Matart, just remember, we're, we're coming off a surplus of 5.7 million. Like next year, if we only have 20,000 for the surplus, there's, there's, it'll be a lot of tight battle, we'll have to tighten our belt everywhere. Okay, Counsel Bernard. Deputy Mary Yankoff and then Counsel McCabe.
And I think yours, that was a good point you just made. I'm not sure if everybody's understanding that. One question I do have is, is under the auxiliary, accelerator fund, the money that we're supposed to be getting is, I think it was 653,000, if memory serves me right? I'm wondering, that, that's 693. So what happens to those positions when that funding dries up? Do we just assume them?
Through to Counsel Bernard. So these positions are being put forward as three-year contract positions. So we're not, we're not hiring them as full-time people, we're hiring them on contract. So after three years, if, if the position's still needed, it will show up here in a new initiative as a, a full-time position.
Okay. So I guess for me, a couple of things. The last time we did a resident, resident survey, even the surveying company commented on how many positive, how high the ratings were for the city of Charlestown in all the different categories. So to me, the city's been doing a really good job. We've done a lot of hiring. I know this, this last year, there seems to be an awful lot of hiring that's been done. And for me, as the city grows, yes, you have to, you have to hire additional people. But I also think you have to mind, mind your finances and your revenues and as that grows, you do your hiring. I don't think, I'm not interested in doing a 1.5 million hiring in one year. When I see all our revenues going down, I see our savings going down, I, I see, you know, tax increase got to happen next year. I mean, you talk about $4,800 surplus, you want to spend the other $2 million on this and guess what? You want to try and buy that land we talked about with the water, protected wells, if you got to come back with 400,000, you can go back. So we have $1 million in for well field protection. You were saying the other night, what happens if it was 1.2 or 1.4? Well, you can come back and ask. How are you going to pay for it with $4,000 in operational? We usually have two, two and a half, $3 million in our extraordinary account. We don't. We have $1 million now. So for things you want to go back and ask for, you have to be able to pay for it in operational. And if you're only going to leave $4,000 in operational, how are you going to borrow more money? What are you going to pay for it with? Well, I'm just concerned about the, about the finance of the future. We've done a lot of hiring. It'd be nice to, yeah, you know, I'm not against doing some more hiring. We have $2 million here to work with. I am against spending the, blowing the hole too and leaving $4,000 surplus. I, I agree, as the city grows, we hire, but I think it's got to be done in with our revenue increases. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Kind of have the similar comments that Counselor Matart had made and that was about a year ago, we hired a new CAO and put quite a bit of work into it and, you know, and from that came a, you know, an organizational church, some matrix to go with it, a lot of hiring, a lot of work. And I just look and I think to ourselves, we only have one hire and that is a CAO. And so I, I do, I have that trust in her that if the, if these are the initiatives that, that she believes that she needs to create a strong, successful operational workforce, then I do support that. And so I just, I don't really have a question. I mean, I'm certainly here to, to support my fellow counselors and if there's other conversations we want to have around these initiatives, but I do, I do support CAO Mohammed and her, and her recommendations and her, and her dean and the initiatives.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm with, I tend to be with Counselor Matart and Yankoff in this conversation. The two big initiatives that we're looking at, one is the new director that has been broken down pretty clearly to see the roles and responsibilities in each one. And when you're looking at trying to organize and do everything that we ask of, of our staff every day and the more demands we're putting on them and the more we're asking for things to be brought up to speed, we're, we're wondering why we're waiting. One thing that if we have to have her pick between the lawyer, that was budgeted at 157,044, our cost really wasn't going down when we looked back at the $400,000 budget line. Maybe that would be the put on hold. There's only a difference of 20, $22,000 there. She could still have a director, get herself organized and we could come back and look if it's that much of a big deal for those one, two bigger positions. But again, I think if that, our CAO is saying this is what she needs and this is what her staff needs to put our ship in the right direction and get us caught up on what we need to be caught up on, I'm going to fully support her.
Counselor Beck, you want to resume your questions?
I think, I, I don't think there's anyone in this room that looks at this matrix or this new initiative summary or whatever it is and says that we don't need it. It would be the same of every department that comes in here that comes forth and says we need this. And the reality is that there's, they've had to gone back, they've had to go back to all the managers and say, we have to cut this, we have to cut that to make it work. One of the things that we've always heard about here is that we need a new funding arrangement with the province. We don't get any commercial tax. Our, there's an imbalance in our, I don't know, whatever we call it, the assessment value that we get back. That's long been talked about, but we're not going to resolve that anytime soon here. It's not going to be resolved for this budget, may not be even resolved for next, next budget, who knows? So I, I guess if the other, the other thing we're trying to do here is we're trying to not raise taxes. Well, we only have revenues from taxes. And if we're going to continue to ask to fulfill all these demands, there's a whole list of litany of items that have not been approved that are going to be coming back at us at some point in time. So I think if we're not going to get that funding arrangement, if we're going to keep approving all these things, we have to be open to saying to the residents, guess what? We will have to do, and I'm a resident, so I'm saying it to myself. And I think that's something we all have to keep in mind, we're all residents here. But at the end of the day, our revenue source comes from our taxes primarily. And if we're going to continue to want and to fulfill all the demands that we have, that comes with a cost. So there has to be an, an acknowledgement that we have to find the sources by hook or by crook. And if we can't, if we can't get a funding arrangement, we have to look at potentially raising our taxes to meet up with all the demands because they're not slowing down from what Eleanor is saying. So I guess this is kind of a, a bit of a, I don't know, a shot across the bow or whatever, but we have to maybe look at doing things differently and be open to different ways of looking at it. But, because the demands are coming, they're warranted, I don't think, it's again, I'll reiterate it, I don't think anyone sitting here is saying that any of these positions have just been plucked out of midair and saying, I think this is what we need. They're well thought out, they've been well thought out by all the managers in our department who are working and I'm very thankful for the managers that we do have here that do great work in our city and for the directors that do great work here in our city. But, you know, there's a, there's a limited pot and unlimited demands. And so if we're going to continue to go down and try and say, yeah, well, let's just put this in and put that in, we have to come up with the money somewhere. And hopefully we can get it through the new tax arrangement that would be able to come forth and then we wouldn't have to be sitting here splitting hairs over $50,000 here, $100,000 there, $1 million here, $1 million there. We can actually get on with the business of being, advancing our city, advancing our needs and. advancing our city, advancing our needs, and, uh, meeting those needs that are ever-increasing. So, um, just like, it's kind of, it's, it's a bit of a here and now, but also a little bit of something down the road as well, too.
So, now, Counselor Beck, we do have a non-residential tax, $2,036, but the province keeps their 150. And the new M, MOU, which went from, the, the one that we left was 217 to 2022. Hopefully, we can get something better out of that, but it's gonna require a lot of research and how we present ourselves to government on this issue. Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. I think we have to also remember, again, where Counselor, Deputy Mary Yankoff said it, we have one employer, and that's our CAO. We don't decide what, what positions are needed. We don't decide who, where this, we decide the bottom-line dollar, what we're willing to give her. And I think it's up to the, her. Sir, if, if this isn't what she needs, she wears this. This is like, we, if we approve, what are we willing to approve financially here to keep us where we wanna be? Physically responsible, of course, but it's her decision how she wants to, what she needs in order to run this organization. I'm not interested in sitting here and saying, "Do we need a director of community services? Do we need a city clerk?" I don't, I don't work for the city. I don't know if we need those positions. But she'll have to be the one to be accountable for why. She's justified it very clearly. I think we need to look at what our financial dollar is and just support her in the roles she wants to do.
Okay. Counselor Bernard, Counselor Matart.
I guess I wonder what we're doing here, then?
Well, approving money.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's what we're supposed to do. So, we, we, we need to approve what we feel is needed for the city of Charlestown. I would suggest, and we, we can go over this all night. We got $2 million. My suggestion would be, we put a million towards new initiative and put the other million in extraordinary for emergencies.
Again, go again, what was that?
I would recommend that out of the $2 million that we have, that 1 million goes back into extraordinary expenses, and the other million can go towards new initiatives. And we go through the new initiatives and see what it is council wants.
Okay.
And as the city grows and as revenue, like, if that revenue sharing thing comes in with the province, we can relook at some more.
One-on-one. Okay, just one second. Counselor Matart, Counselor Beck.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, well, I wasn't gonna comment, but I will now. I'm not interested in going through, I mean, if we have to move money, that's one thing, but I'm not going through this list and determining what we need or don't need. If anything, we would send the CAO back to say, "Do what you gotta do with the most priority you have." So, it wouldn't be an exercise that I'd be interested in sitting here determining what positions we need and which ones we don't. Uh, second, and this is back to Counselor Bernard, if you can just run some numbers for me, as you indicated. I think you were indicating that we've had surpluses in previous years. Last year, I think we had 5.7.
Yes.
Maybe the year before, we had something, I don't know.
3.8.
3.8. Maybe the year before, we had.
Six, six plus.
Okay. So, we're generally, and then that's the start of this operational budget. I think the comment was, this is a status quo budget. So, that would lead me to believe that we might come in roughly, if everything, all things are equal, come back in around, maybe somewhere in that general areas, uh, the 3% to 5%, 6% surplus, uh, minus the 2%, so we'd be around 4%. Like, I guess trend's telling me that each year, there's a surplus. You're concerned this year, there won't be a surplus. Why all of a sudden is the trend this year that there's no surplus, when three years, I just asked, I was 6% last year, 5% the year before, 3% the year before? Why would we not get to a surplus this year?
Okay.
If we, if all things are equal in, in the status quo budget?
Yeah, yeah. But we'll come back to, I, I just, I have other questions coming up, so just, no, no, are you done? Did you wanna?
I'm not asking a question directly to, I'm not, I'm not asking the question directly to Counselor Bernard. I'm just, he, he was stating some surplus numbers, and I picked up on that thinking that there, if, is there a trend that, you know, and this may be a question for, for Dan, the finance folks, is that, you know, are we, you know, I think we're just thinking that we only have a $4,000 potential surplus. But in reality, if all things are managed the way they should and have been in previous years, we tend to have a surplus, is what I'm observing. I could be wrong in that, but we tend to have a large surplus. So, I question why this year, we might not have a large surplus again, or at least in the millions.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah, I, I think that's a logical assumption. I, I guess it kinda goes back to my point again, that if we don't, I mean, we were able this year, we, what was our surplus?
5.7.
Which we were able to give us the balanced budget this year.
That's right.
So, we only have a balanced budget because we have a $5.6 million surplus. If that budget is a $3 million surplus next year, or if we have a $1 million surplus, we're looking at a significant loss in revenue, which goes back to my point that I'm saying if our, we can approve, yeah, sure, we can approve all these things, but there might come a day where we will be sitting here, if we don't have a new arrangement with the province, or if we don't have a new revenue source coming in, we have to look at different revenues, which puts us in a situation where we have to say, we either continue cutting and give, uh, we're, we're sitting here, we're cutting our services, and we can't deliver on what we're, everyone's looking for, or we have to raise our tax rates. So, this is a, there's a bit of guesswork on this here, and there's a little bit of guesswork with everything. But, you know, um, I, I, I just, it, it's not just a 24, 25 question, it's a, it's a question of beyond as well, too. So, um, you know, surpluses, I, I don't wanna bank on anything. I think we go with what our projections are, and then we, we, we adjust accordingly and see, see what the March 31st, 25 brings.
Counselor Ramsey, Bernard MacLair.
And I agree with Counselor Beck what he's saying, too, and Counselor Bernard. We gotta, I always preach, like, if you're taking $100,000 in your home, you can't spend 120. But you gotta plan, and if there's a few things that our CAO can maybe say, "We can wait," like, put it on hold. Don't say that it's gonna be canceled. Just put it on hold for now, and then we can always look at it again next year, because we did last year, looked at some positions. And as she stated earlier, too, it took a while to hire two new directors by the time she found the proper ones, which are doing a great job. But I think we're putting, and I'm hearing from three or four counselors here, all our eggs in one basket by saying, "The province gotta do something, the province gotta do something." Guys, we can't be banking on that, because we're doing our budget now, and the province already did their budget, I believe. So, it's gonna be, as Counselor Beck said, a good year, year and a half, you know, before they even sit down with us, I think. Because, like, they're not gonna come and say, "Okay, Charlestown, you're gonna get more tax dollars." Like, I, I'd be totally surprised. So, that's gonna take a process, it's gonna take a long process, sitting down with them. But we keep, keep, keep saying, "Well, if the province," you know, we're working on this deal with the province. Well, guys, we all know what the province is going through, too. And, like, and then if they're gonna give to Charlestown, they're gonna give to Somerset, they're gonna give to Monique, the whole nine yards. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Counselor Bernard.
Actually, Norman, Norman said it all. I mean, I mean, that, and that's my concern. I mean, we're making more realistic budget, we're making more realistic numbers. Um, you're kinda on a wing and a prayer if you're just hoping for another big surplus in another year, and we don't know that's gonna happen. And so, if it doesn't, where does that leave us? And that's why I'm just, I'm just looking for patience, um, do some hiring, but don't spend the whole amount of money that we have left, that we could use for, uh, an emergency or extenuating circumstance.
Counselor MacLair.
Yeah.
Counselor MacLair.
No, thank you, Mayor Brown. And just, just to, um, Counselor Matart's comment, you know, like, you know, anticipate, maybe, you know, we may have, you know, surplus if we look back, referring to the 5.7 last year. And I know, um, but going forward with, and maybe Danny or Betty, or maybe both could speak, but if you look at the trend line, if you looked at our last committee report with where the, uh, long-term debt and servicing of interest rate and depreciation's going, like, it's, it's gonna put a lot of pressure on them. Maybe if you could just reiterate that piece maybe for us.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. Through to the chair. Um, yes, certainly, next year, in terms of the capital expenditures that we're doing, uh, there will be additional pressure. Uh, but as we go into that year, we would also anticipate that there would be assessment increases, um, that would contribute additional revenue, hopefully to, to offset some of those. Um, so, I, I did wanna make the point, I, I wanted to vector in a little early in the conversation, but I, I think it's important to consider with these new initiatives, um, that each and every one of those are strategic investments that our CAO and, uh, staff have identified, um, as being key to maintaining service levels, improving the effectiveness of administration, and, and moving the, uh, strategic priorities that have been identified through public consultation, uh, discussions at council, council stated priorities, um, and, and, and priorities identified within the department. So, I, I, I really encourage you to consider these new initiatives much more as an investment in the city's future than as, um, a waste of, of potential surplus, uh, because I do think, I, I feel very confident that, uh, our CAO, uh, is, is really interested in moving this, um, corporation forward, and that, that these would, these would pay dividends down the road.
Okay. Counselor Crown, are you done there, Counselor MacLair? Yeah.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, I, I agree with Counselor Bernard there. You know, put it a little bit away, give, give a million to the CAO, pick her, uh, uh, best staff that she needs for this year, and then we can come back next year and get the other half. Just that we, we have to be financial prudent anyway. That's, that's all I can say. Just hope that she can get some staff in place that she feels the need, and, and then we get to put away a little bit in case of emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beck.
I'd have to understand, what does that look like exactly? So, we, we say we take, uh, I think it's a little over 2 million, right?
2,53,000.
2,53,000.
Quarter and a half.
Take a million of that.
Yep.
Eleanor takes that and uses it as immediately as she sees fit.
Looks at the positions, yeah.
But the extraordinary circumstances part, I don't quite understand what that, what would that, what would that look like? How's that, how would that?
In the past, it was 2.5 million.
Right?
And this year, it's down to a million. So, what Counselor Bernard suggested is to put it back up to 2. So, with extraordinary expenses, that we've taken money out of that for extraordinary reasons. And, and then sometimes it was just left there. Just, just one second.
So, bump, bump that back up to 2, and then again, is it Eleanor's discretion to use it from, from that point on, or does that come back to council for approval? What does, what does, what happens there? Again, sorry, pardon my ignorance. I don't, I don't know how this works. Counselor Bernard's been here a lot longer than I have, so I don't, I'm not familiar with how this would actually unfold. So, I'm just trying to seek clarification on what that.
So, Counselor Matart, I said, "I don't wanna go through these one by one, who, who we keep, who we keep, who we don't keep." Take that million and let the CAO decide how they're gonna work that out with that million.
No, I, I understand that part. I, but I'm just the, where Counselor Bernard is suggesting taking the, bumping the contingency fund or extraordinary expenses from 1 million to 2, that $2 million fund gets accessed and executed by who? By Eleanor? Does it come back to us for approval of those expenses, or does she just say, "Here's what I need to run the organization"?
No, no extraordinary expenses.
So, no, but where does it go? Does she, does she take that and access it, or does she say?
It always, any, any change in that budget use has to come back to council.
So, if Eleanor determines three months down the road that she needs $145,000 for this, she comes to us to seek approval to use it?
Correct.
But immediately, right now, she's given $1 million to go through these new initiatives and use them as she sees fit.
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I agree, I guess, with Counselor Bernard in the sense, "Let's not spend it all." I like his suggestion of the, let's keep it out, keep a million and to let Eleanor take that and spend it as it is, and put a little bit back into the savings and keep it. So, just agreeing with, uh, Counselor Bernard.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. I'm just looking, um, I guess, Dan, I need your confidence or your approval, like, with this $2 million, are we in a good place? Are we okay? And I'll tell you, if we only approve $1 million, that's the place. That's the, that's the 5 plus the, um, 6 that we've already approved just prior to coming into this budget that we committed to three months ago.
The 6 is already covered. We've already.
That would be.
This is 5 million.
Five more, so another $900,000, though.
6, 5, 6, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, we've kind of, publicly, we know we've committed to the people in our city that this is a priority. So, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, you know, and the mayor wants 2 million or whatever for Confederation Center, which is the cornerstone of our city. We have a lot of things that I just think, are we okay? Can you tell me? I'm not a fin, this is big money for someone like me to talk about. Are you confident with this $2 million, go for it, we are okay?
Well, I, I would say that I would prefer to be in a surplus position. I'd rather us be looking at a $5 million surplus and providing all the levels of service that we can. But that, but that is not where we are. Um, do I think that the, um, budget that we've agreed to so far with the capital expenditures and the operational budget with the new initiatives in, do I think that's manageable? Yes, I do.
Counselor Matart and Counselor Bernard.
Just want a clarification, 'cause I think there's a number of initiatives that are in that spreadsheet that are not, uh, resource-based, right? 'Cause I think 200,000 of it was for the Confederation Center as a grant, but it's listed in there.
That's, that's gone.
Uh, is that, that's still the one we're talking about, though, right?
Yeah.
But it's still shown there. Okay, I think you're correct in that sense.
So, that's gonna be used for the sidewalks and, uh, anything that we do at CCCO, so it's not, that shouldn't.
But there are a number of initiatives here, I think, that are not all FTE, correct?
Or not what?
Uh, staff or resources, sorry. Kinda hard to jump.
Majority are.
I'm not really sure.
Majority are, but there's some that aren't, I think, yeah.
Federation.
Just wondering what those are.
Yeah, there are digital forensic services for 75,000, agenda management technology for 30,000. Um, civic events staff is, is 15,000 for, those would be contract, um, short-term, uh, assistance to host events, uh, in lieu of the fact that it's getting more and more difficult to, uh, get volunteers to, to look after those things.
It'd be $100,000.
$100,000 was to assist in the procurement, uh, bylaw rewrite and to develop procedures, um, to, to move ahead the procedure, the, uh, procurement bylaw. Uh, the shift supervisors are two full, f, full-time equivalents, uh, there. We had the IT support technician, uh, for one position, the director of community services. Uh, the city solicitor, if it was approved, would be one FTE, but we, as, as was, um, suggested earlier, we expect that the solic, the legal fees would, would be reduced by, um, an equal amount, thereabouts, maybe a little more, a little less, but, uh, that was the assumption that was made. Um, moving down the list, we have, um, uh, parks foreman position, that's one full-time equivalent, two permanent Simmons cleaning staff, uh, those are two permanent positions. Um, one building inspector, which would be a contract position, um, which would match up with the funding agreement for the Housing Accelerator Fund, which would be a three-year horizon. Um, beyond that, it would be subject to, uh, to, to negotiation and, and funding. Uh, same situation with the GIS specialist would be a contract for the duration of the Housing Accelerator Fund. Um, the five new officers for the city police force would be five new FTEs. Um, the comms, uh, community media liaison to, uh, to look after emergency services would be housed at, uh, the police station and would look, look after police, fire, NEMO, uh, and that would be one additional FTE. Uh, the municipal engineer contract, uh, would, would match up again with the Housing Accelerator Fund, would be a three-year term. Uh, civil technician contract would, would be the, the same, um, would be, uh, one, one human, uh, but, uh, the, the term would match up with the Accelerator Fund, um, the funding support for that. And then there was one cleaner position, um, that Public Works had, had requested, and that's, uh, one, one FTE.
Thank you for running through that, Dan. Um, okay, no, that clarifies, just, it was probably good to just do the high-level overview of the different things that are, um, budgeted for in there. So, I guess now down to the business and what we decide.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Bernard, and then Counselor MacLair.
Yeah, I was just gonna give, um, I know Counselor Beck was asking some examples. So, for example, extraordinary account can be for emerg- for example, extraordinary account can be for emergencies, could be used for, you know, what the city feels it needs. So, let's say the plant let go in one of the ranks, East Link. Say the plant let go and you need two or three million dollars to fix it. Well, let's get some money out of the extraordinary. If there's lamp purchases you needed, or something happened that was quite expensive that you didn't expect, there's the emergency funds that you can get money from. And yes, it would come here to council to approve it to be spent.
Okay. Anyways, extraordinary means extraordinary. So, Counsel MacLair.
Yeah, no, just, you know, I'm just kind of, kind of context reality, may or might here. Like, we looked at, we looked at this as C A O said, and it started at a broad number of 4.7 million for new initiatives, and 30-some positions or 38. It got, has since got pared down to, to the moment of, of 2 million, and, you know, 20, potentially 20 positions to, to, then, then taken another million out. You know, I, you know, to do to Counsel Bernard and the, the discussion of leaving only $4,000 surplus, like, you know, we're done, we're done a capital, or I'm assuming we're done a capital, so we're dealing with operating. So, the only, you know, the only way you see putting any more money in that bottom line or your surplus is, you got to look at these new initiatives. And the biggest, one of the biggest items there, if we take a million out, well, you know, there's, you know, the five police officers, 650,000. Is that, is that, is that something that we're prepared to park for a year? I know it goes against the, it goes against the, the, the priority in our listing, and people saying, you know, wanting more security. But, you know, at the end of the day, what we're looking at in front of us, and where, and where we want to be with zero, zero, zero pressure on, on a tax rate increase, you know, putting, you know, leaving a million dollars there, and if you want any more on the bottom line, you think about parking your request for the police for this year, possibly.
Yeah. And we had the other priority, arts and culture, that was one of our five priorities. We had that down, with the Confederation Center as one. Counsel McCabe.
I'm trying to find it in this book.
What's that book?
I remember our good friend Deputy, Jason Cody looking, being fired up because we never had anything in our extraordinary fund, ever. So, I'm just wondering, what have we had in our extraordinary fund? Because I remember it was 0, 0, 0 for a real long, every year. So, I'm just wondering, did we ever build that up?
It was 500,000 used last year, wasn't it?
Just, just looking at the last audited financial statement. So, in fiscal '22, we had no extraordinary expenditures. In 2023, we had no extraordinary expenditures. We do have 500, 500,000 in there currently forecast. I don't know exactly what those are, I'm sorry. But that's, that's the extent over the last three years.
Was more to point out that we haven't really had an extraordinary, extraordinary fund, and it was to make sure that, I just remembered that. We've done pretty well considering we didn't have that either, and I remember that being a concern.
We've been good managers.
Huh?
We've been good managers as, as a council.
Absolutely. And we had a good C A O.
Yes, fully agree. Counsel Ramsey.
Yeah. We had the citizens survey done, and number one, and we had one done by council, number one, to get back to Counsel MacLair's point of parking the five police officers. It was number one in everyone's list in council and, and with all the residents. And, you know, if we're going to park something, like, we can park some upper management before, we can park the five police officers that everybody's going on about, that we need more police officers and more boots in the ground. So, you know, things like that. So, like, there's no way that I'm going to vote for that. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Bernard, wrap it up.
I thought there was 2.5 million in, in the extraordinary last year, and 500,000 came out. Anyway, you know, a good example would be if we have a bad year for snow, and you're over the budget in snow, 500,000, 600,000, that's where it would come from. Anyway.
Yeah. And you know what, Counsel McCabe? 215 was Snowmageddon, and they went in, they had, they had a deficit. That was the first time since amalgamation. So, I think that extraordinary expenses account was part of that response, so that, so that we don't, so, so we don't have to.
We had to go with the problem.
Did you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's right, it had to be a balanced budget. Okay. Counsel Beck, you want to wrap it up there, old monsieur?
Well, I'd like to hear from Eleanor what.
What's suggested?
What, what does that look like for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, what does that mean? If you had, and, and maybe I would throw out, what does 1.25 and 750,000 in a extraordinary fund, or 1.5 million, and then an extra $500,000 into the extraordinary expenses fund? Like, if we're, if we're looking at divvying up this $2,000, or 2 million, sorry. So, the 2 million, we, we could make a decision tonight to say, okay, let's approve the 2 million. Or what does it look like from your, as our only hire, what does it look like for, if you were to say a million dollars first blush, or 1.25, or even 1.5 million, to say, I can use it as I see fit, and then leave the others as needed and.
I'm sure she's going to say the 2 million would satisfy all.
Oh, I, I know, I, I know that's, I know that's where we're at. But we, we have another proposition put on the floor. The proposition was put on the floor to give 1 million dollars, use as you see fit, and defer the million to another fund. I don't know what that looks like for Eleanor. I don't know what that means to her. I don't know what the implications are there. So, that's kind of, I think, I'd like to hear what Eleanor's take is on, on that, and what that would mean to her operation and to the city as a whole.
C A O, C A O Muhammad.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counsel Beck. Well, I think there's a couple of things. Philosophically, there's different ways of doing budgets. In my almost 20 years of municipal experience, I've never budgeted on a surplus before, ever. I was always required under legislation to zero out the budget. And if you can't zero out that budget, you increase your taxes. And that's just the end of the story. There was no, I had never heard of an extraordinary expenses bucket before coming to Charlottetown. I only dealt with reserves. Reserves set aside for in case you had an emergency. Reserves set aside for I have a 20 million capital project that I need to start saving for, because I have a five-year, 10-year capital plan, I know what's coming, so I'm throwing money into that reserve to get ready for that really large expense. So, when I see only $4,000 in surplus, it doesn't make me squirm, because I'm used to budgeting on zero-based budgets. So, for us, when you budget on a 0% budget, the surplus is gravy that comes at the end that you put onto debt or you put into reserves. That's what you do with it every single year. So, there's a couple of things, and it's, it's, it's philosophy. Because some would argue, if you, it's a philosophy. Some would argue, if you're budgeting for surplus, then you're not responsibly spending taxpayer dollar. If you're budgeting for zero, then you are responsibly, if you go into debt, you're also not being responsible in terms of taxpayer dollars as well. So, there's a couple of different approaches to this. I'm, I'm not going to sugarcoat this. If you cut this by a million, there's, there's not much here. There's not much here in terms of positions when you look at it, what Dan just went through anyway. The, one of the first places I have to go is police. I don't have a choice. If I am to deliver what I was hired here to do, I need that director in place. Otherwise, what happens is I come back to you next year, and I won't have delivered what you need. That's the reality of it. By saying, Eleanor, walk away with a million dollars, you make the choice, well, puts me in a position where I have to go, oh, great. Now I have to choose a director over a Parks Foreman position, maybe. They're both desperately needed. So, then I go, okay, I have that choice to make, because councils prioritize some other capital projects that maybe we don't have to finance in order to get these positions in place. So, this is the give and take of a budget. We've already cut half of the positions that came forward for this year. Those 20 positions are coming back next year. If I, it can only fill five positions. There's 35 positions plus the other ones on the list for next year that are coming back. We have to invest in the workforce of this municipality. This is what it comes down to. It can't all be about roads and sidewalks. It's the workforce of the municipality that matters. So, if you send me off with a million, I will make those choices. If you send me with 1.5, maybe I have a better fighting chance. But the 2 million, like I said, I'm comfortable with, because I've had zero budgets. And every time we zeroed out that budget, we always had a surplus. Not one year did we come back without surplus. So, I, I, I don't know how to present it any other way. I've given all the evidence that, that I can to get to this point, and all I can leave you with is, we need this.
Counsel Bernard, Counsel Beck, Counsel MacLair.
So, it was a number of years ago that we tried to set up reserves, and the government wouldn't allow us to set up reserves. So, that's where extraordinary expenses came from. It was a one-line item. So, that's, that's why we don't have reserves, because they never allowed us to set them up. You know what? I, I guess what surprises me is the sheer number of bodies that all of a sudden the city of Charlottetown needs. It's just, to me, it's, it's, you're going from here to reach for the ceiling, and it, it doesn't seem like a plan is, this is what I need, or the city's going to fall apart. I don't buy that. I, I, I do agree that as the city grows, you need staff. But you know what? You look at the head count, that was, that was in the report, 439 for the city of Charlottetown, 38,000 people. You divide, you do the math, it's 100 staff for 10,000 people. It was above the other cities, except for one, that the geographical size of it was 77 kilometers, so the city's 44 kilometers. So, I'm assuming they spread out more services. But man, I mean, we've done a lot of hiring, we're going to do a lot more hiring, and then I guess next year we're going to do more hiring. So, you know what? There's no way the city's going to keep up with the revenue that's coming in. So, let's call a spade a spade. Might as well prepare to raise taxes if this the road you want to get down. Or we can do it, that, do it as you can afford it, you live within your means, and you hire what you need at the time. That's my take.
Okay.
I'm done for tonight.
Counsel Beck.
I, I think what was important here tonight was to hear detailed explanation of what our C A O needs, to articulate that to everybody here. And I don't think, I, I haven't felt that I, we have had that sort of open discussion flush that out. So, I think that was important to have here tonight. I will echo your, your, your comments, Counsel Bernard, and I, I share them. And I, I think that if we are, and I, I think going back to your comment about upstaffing, I think the city has been underserved in definite areas, and I think that's been brought to light through various means, anecdotally, B D O report, K P M G. I mean, the K P M G was commissioned to provide better governance for our city, and to brought in. We, we brought in, and they said, this is what you guys need. And Eleanor has taken elements of that report and incorporated it in here today. I think, I think as, as the, at the end of the day, I only have two budgets to go through, last year and this year. And last year, admittedly, I didn't know what I was doing. This year, I'm slightly ahead of the curve, but I still don't think I'm there, in all full, full disclosure here in front of that YouTube camera tonight. But, I think one thing that I have noticed different was the human resource demands. I don't, I don't remember them being this big as they were this year. So, I think there is, to Eleanor's point, there are some human resource elements that we have to address. All that being said, in, unless we come up with some new funding sources, we have to be open to looking at, and I'll reiterate, that'll be my closing point here again tonight, we have to look at different ways that we're going to be able to fund the ever-increasing needs that our citizens are looking for and that our citizens are demanding. And there's a whole bunch of stuff, there's a lot of stuff that was cut off this table, but there's a lot of stuff that's going to be coming back at us again, and varied needs and limited revenues. So, just be, be cognizant of that, I guess, is the important part.
Well, ten and Atlantic Mayor's Congresses with the other Atlantic Mayors, I think this city is doing quite well, and it's because of our staff and the work that they do in the community. And I know that our C A O wants to add to that staff, because she knows from, coming from another part of the country, that this is how the system works, this is how we can work more effectively, understand that. So, do you want a million, 1.5? What do you want? Counsel Yankov.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Just, just, I mean, if they're building on this million-dollar thing, we have an 84 million-dollar operational budget and a 15 million-dollar operational budget for water and sewer. Gives us, what if everyone took 1% from their departments? That would give us the million dollars, wouldn't it? If we had, if we have 100 million dollars. So, what about if every department finds 1%, is it 1% that I have to find? Did I do my math right?
Yeah, that, you could do that, Heather, you could just go the million, million-five or two. What do you want to do? Okay. Okay, let's do a roundtable. Counsel McCabe, two. Counselor Beck, two. Counsel Duran.
A million dollars with a guarantee you don't go after the police.
Okay. Counsel McKinnon.
Same, same as Counsel Duran, with the, give the million dollars, but leave the police alone. I think park some of these other positions for one year. Let's see how we get along with what we got, and readdress it next year.
Counsel Matarde.
I'd support.
Counsel Ramsey.
I'd stick with one and along, as a new justice police.
So, that's, that's.
Just one second.
Just on the police, that's all that I'm.
Counsel, Counsel, Counsel MacLair. Okay, hold on, hold on. Counsel MacLair. 1.5.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
1.5.
This isn't a paper.
No, no, no. Listen, I, I'll come back around, don't worry. Deputy, oh, sorry, deputy.
I'd stick with the two.
Two. Okay. 1.5, 1.5, it, it's.
Two's the, two's the winner.
No, two's not the winner. The.
Three, four.
There are five counselors. We got nine, we got nine.
One with no police, and two with one.
Yeah, no, no, but.
Five, I disagree.
Five disagree.
Oh.
So.
So, over here.
Yeah.
Would you agree on 1.5?
1.5. No. Okay.
I vote for two, and just a reminder, we can't tell people, can't tell her how to spend for what position.
No, 1.5. Counsel Beck. Two. Okay. Counsel McKinnon.
If one's off the table, I'll go 1.5.
1.5. Counsel Duran, sorry, Counsel Duran, I missed you there, because you're not in the, in the, in the chamber.
No problem, but if it's 1.5 or two, I'll go with 1.5 with a recommendation that you don't touch the police.
Okay.
Now, I know fellow colleagues said we can't say, but we can certainly ask for a recommendation that you can't go down that way.
Okay. Counsel Matarde, two. Oh, sorry, Counsel Matarde.
I'd support the 2 million.
Two. Counsel Ramsey.
1.5.
Counsel MacLair.
1.5 and, and all options to discretion of C A O.
Counsel Bernard.
1.5.
Yeah. Deputy, two. Okay. So, it's 5, 4 for 1.5. That's what it is. It's up to the C A O to look at 1.5 and come back to us. So, wrapping it up, the only thing that we have left is the. So wrapping it up, the only thing that we have left is the new initiatives, so, yeah. Water and sewer, everything has been, we've gone through the operational budget, we've gone through the capital budget, this was our last presentation. Just trying to, Dan, you want to close it up?
Yes, no, I think CAO Mohammed has some work to do in terms of trying to identify where, where she's going to come up with half a million dollars off of.
Two.
You know what, yeah, yeah, off the two, but, yeah, we, I think we have our instructions, so.
Okay, so can we reconvene tomorrow, or do you want to wait another day?
Tomorrow.
Well, she has to come back with the, you just want to leave it that? You just, again, do you wish to see the, the choices?
We don't want to say anything.
Good. So if we don't have a say in it, it's her, it's her decision?
Well, come ask, maybe I'm wrong.
No, no, no.
Someone has understood that we approve the money and policies and procedures, we don't approve positions. But if I'm wrong, can someone clarify?
Yeah, so.
Want to know the information.
So we approved 1.5 for positions.
Right, because she don't approve what she spends that on. She can either do.
That's, she comes back, and then, and that's it, we're done, we're done with it.
But.
There's no.
But I ask, though, Your Worship, I understand.
When I'm saying that, I just want to make sure that I'm speaking what is the right thing. Clarify for me, is that correct? We approved the budget?
She doesn't, she doesn't have to come back to us, she'll just pick 1.5 million.
I know. Okay, but we, you know, we've done it differently in the past, so I'm just making sure that I'm.
In the past, what we do is we'd go through the list and council would vote on who would.
Whether or not they wanted those positions.
That's right. This year, we're giving the CAO the responsibility.
Your Worship, I guess if that's the case, then there's probably no need for us to come back, just delegate that responsibility to the CAO to make those choices, and we'll prepare a final document.
And we'll, we'll affirm.
On March 28.
Affirm the decision.
We'll, we'll distribute the, the information once we have a finalized document done, and we're set to go for the 28th.
But are we all right to say both capital and operational are done?
Yep. Good work.
Counsel Matarde.
Just, just on that whole, but I think the lens that you'll still continue with is the priorities that we've identified in there, but policing was one of our top priorities, and work your way down, I know it's going to be difficult, but.
Yeah. Counsel Beck.
Is that how it would be done?
Yeah, I, I think Danny answered what I was wondering, so basically, we've given Eleanor marching orders to go with 1.5 million, she'll come back and say, here's where I'm allocating the 1.5 million, and we've left an additional $500,000 in extraordinary expenses, beef that up.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't think, I don't think we need another meeting, and I think, I think we're done with both.
So I think we need a resolution to approve both budgets.
No.
You don't, you don't want to give an approval? You don't? Yeah, you don't, okay. We're all on board for the 28th?
I won't be here that day, Your Worship.
You'll, you'll be phoning in.
I won't be phoning in, I'll be in the air, I'm sorry. Yeah, but I'm really grateful that I got to have this experience.
We're always grateful to have you here, always grateful.
Maybe Kate made that decision. Aren't you maybe? Then I've got that control anyway. That's right.
So I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counsel McCabe, second by Counsel Ramsey, all those.